Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce. The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Nestled in a classic New England setting amid 200-year-old elm trees and charming colonial homes, stately sea captains' homes, and charming Cape Cod salt boxes, Shoreway Acres is a graceful blend of Cape Cod's past and present. Shoreway Acres, proud sponsor of Falmouth Community Television.
Green Harbor Waterfront Lodging is nestled in a woodland setting on a picturesque ocean inlet. Green Harbor offers a family waterfront vacation. Enjoy our private boating beach with dock, rowboats, and paddle boats, oversized heated outdoor pool and kiddie pool. Relax in our waterfront and beachside accommodations. 548-4747, or gogreenharbor.com. People think that a locally owned and operated appliance store may not offer what they need. Actually, we have trained and dedicated sales associates, expert delivery and installation, professional repair service, and personal customer service. Plus, we have access to a huge local warehouse with over 6,000 models in stock. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303, or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638, or meganet.net.
The Quarterdeck Restaurant located on Main Street in the heart of Falmouth, specializing in fresh local seafood and other classic American cuisine, featuring a full bar with friendly staff. And the Bucatino Restaurant and Wine Bar located in North Falmouth just off Nathan Ellis Highway, featuring catering services with two full event rooms serving up classic Italian cuisine. The Quarterdeck Restaurant and Bucatino Restaurant and Wine Bar, we're here to serve all our friends in Falmouth. I'm confirming preliminary matter. I'll confirm for the record, members and staff are present and can hear me. And when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Doug Jones?
Here, Jones.
Sam Patterson?
Present.
Nancy Taylor?
Taylor, present.
And Doug Brown, present. And Mr. Suso is present. And is Mr. Johnson stop joining us this evening?
I am here as well.
Okay, very good. Thank you. So, the open meeting of the Select Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020. For this meeting, the Select Board is convening by video conference via Zoom app. Meeting is also being broadcast on cable channel 15 and streamed online at www.fctv.org. For those who wish to view the meeting but do not wish to participate, we suggest viewing on FCTV. Members of the public who wish to make comments or ask questions during the meeting may join the meeting as Zoom attendees, which allows you to submit written comments and questions via the chat function, and also to hear the meeting in real time. Please note there is a time lag between the real-time Zoom online meeting and the FCT video, whether viewed on cable TV or streamed online. The link and instructions for joining the meeting are listed on the agenda posting on the town website. This meeting is being recorded, and some individuals who have been invited to make a presentation are also participating by video conference. Analysts are asked to mute their mics except when speaking and attempt to minimize background noise in your location to maintain audio quality. Also be advised, open windows on your computer may be broadcast and recorded if you hit the screen share button on your computer. We are now meeting business ground rules. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for the effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. As Chair, I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. Please remember to mute the mic on the Zoom app when you are not speaking, or if using the mobile phone, mute your phone when not speaking. When a meeting participant wishes to interject a question or comment, please state your name and ask to be recognized. After the presentation and member discussion, the Chair will ask a staff member to read any questions or comments typed into the video Zoom chat by members of the public. All votes for this remote meeting will be taken via roll call. I will call out the name of each member and ask you to repeat your last name before stating your vote. We will now proceed with the meeting. Begin pledge of allegiance. Here's the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And let's see, the first thing is EverSource Verizon New England petition for the installation of one pole at Barrows Road, south of Rivers Edge Road. Proposed location is required for sustaining and protecting pictures to be owned and used in common by petitioners along across public way. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm kind of going off the track here. We have recognition. I didn't prepare anything for recognition. If anybody wants to make any comments for recognition? Is there anything anyone's thinking of?
Nothing comes to mind.
Okay. Any announcements anyone has to make? No, nothing for me either. Any public comment? Do we have anything in the chat? I don't see anything. Okay, then I guess we can get back to that EverSource petition. So that's for new pole at the corner of Barrows Road, south of Rivers Edge Road. The proposed location is required for sustaining and protecting pictures to be owned and used in common by petitioners along and across the public way. Anybody have any comments or questions about the EverSource pole?
It was reviewed by our town engineers. With that, I'll move approval.
Okay. Second?
I'll second.
Okay, very good. And all in favor, Ms. Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Mr. Jones?
Jones, aye.
Mr. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
And Brown, aye. Very well, that one's all set. The vote to approve application for Mass Wildlife Habitat Management Grant, invasive plant management. It seemed like a good idea to me. Is there anybody that wants to comment on that, or any discussion? No?
This was submitted by, submitted for approval to, by one of our town staff. Appears to be in good shape, so I would move approval.
I'll second.
Very good. And all in favor, Ms. Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
And Mr. Jones?
Jones, aye.
Mr. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
And Brown, aye. Two down. Approved solar phase-two pilot agreement. And that was the same, I guess, verbatim agreement that we approved on the first one, Mr. Suso.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have Town Council Frank Duffy and Assistant Town Council Irene Mullen with us. As you noted, this is essentially the same agreement, solar agreement that we had the first time around with Phase One. This is Phase Two, and it does involve a pilot payment ultimately to the town in quarterly installments for the life of the solar installation. And I know that Frank and Irene are available should the board have any questions on moving forward. We're looking forward to doing so, and my compliments to all for getting us to this point.
Okay. Does anybody want to ask any questions of the attorneys?
I think, yeah, we actually, I think, moved on this back in early July. So my question really to the attorneys, has there been any changes at all?
Okay. Who would like to answer that?
We're just bringing Frank and Irene into the, I don't think they're quite on yet, but just about momentarily.
All right. Good evening, Ms. Mullen.
Good evening. I think Frank is going to take this one once he gets his, yeah, there we go.
Folks, I'm sorry, I did not hear the question.
Mr. Patterson had a question.
Yeah, I think we framed this back in early July and sent it to the EDIC. So I'm just asking, were there any changes?
No, this is prepared basically to follow the first one for Phase One. It was sent to the EDIC, then it was sent to the developer of Falmouth Landfill Solar Roman numeral II. There are no significant, there actually are no changes at all. Same.
All right, then.
With that, I would move approval.
I'll second.
Very good. And all in favor, Ms. Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Mr. Jones?
Jones, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
And Brown, aye. So unanimous. Very good. Can't wait to get that going, get some more electricity flowing out there. Okay, authorization to accept funding for Mass DOT for technical assistance related to Complete Streets program. Is there anyone coming in, Mr. Suso?
I don't believe Jim McLaughlin is going to be with us this evening, but you do have a memo from him recommending a favorable consideration. This would allow us to apply those dollars through the Cape Cod Commission staff to develop a priority list and related information, along with public outreach for the Complete Streets program. So I think it's very timely with this board, having within the past year adopted the Complete Streets package, and will help guide our investments in street sidewalk and related improvements going forward with the board's concurrence, of course.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
I think this is really coming along after we really kind of used this model for the planning of that T-ticket highway extension out into East Falmouth. And so it's nice that we've got an opportunity to maybe look at some other streets here in Falmouth, then apply the same model and see whether we can broaden the services that we provide to everyone.
Right, sounds good. Okay, then, is there a motion to move forward with this?
Oh, so move.
Okay.
I'll second.
Very good. And so, all in favor, Ms. Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Mr. Jones?
Jones, aye.
And Mr. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
And Brown, aye. So unanimous again. Okay, authorized community preservation committee applications. A is the Conservation Department and the 300 Committee application for permanent protection of 9.3 acre Florence Sylvia Woodlands property in North Falmouth. And there's two of them. Should we vote them separately? Mr. Suso?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We do have Staff Member Mark Kasperzick with us, who directed the memo describing this proposed sub-element A conservation restriction. And perhaps the board would like to hear some comments from Mark.
Yes, please. Welcome.
Hi, good evening. Yes, I just wanted to, you know, for the Conservation Commission and for the 300 Committee, fully endorse their application. This, I don't know if anybody's been able to look at the property yet over in North Falmouth, but you know, it's a gorgeous piece, 9.3 acres. The cost is going to be $600,000. The still, 300 Committee is still fundraising, but they're looking to apply for $200,000 from the CPA funds to, you know, cover some of the costs for the permanent conservation restriction.
I haven't seen it myself, but I've had neighbors tell me it's very nice. It's great that we have all these little places to go for walks all over town. Bit of resource. Any other questions or comments?
Well, just, Mark, thanks for your work, both here and on the earlier vote that we just took in submitting those grant applications. So I would move approval.
I'll second.
Very good. All in favor, Ms. Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Mr. Jones?
Jones, aye.
Mr. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
And Brown, aye. Thank you, Mark. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming by.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mark.
And the next is Recreation Department application for funding for hardcore renovations on Bell Tower Lane in Woods Hole, also applying for the community preservation funds. And Mr. Olenek is going to join us, I guess?
Yes.
Good evening, Mr. Olenek.
Good evening. How are you guys tonight?
Good, thanks. How are you doing tonight?
Doing well.
So you want to tell us a little bit about the need for this and what you plan to do?
I do. We're talking to talk about the Bell Tower tennis courts and Woods Hole down behind St. Joseph's Church. You see the slide here, it's just showing the condition of the courts right now with cracks and the gate doors barely open, crack along the net, along with my shadow there in the picture. Next slide, please. You can see the net posts are bending, and the backboard is basically falling apart, grass and shrubs growing up the fencing. So after communication with some of the people in Woods Hole, we've decided to take a look at this. And the new, the court now has two tennis courts. The rehabilitation will improve it to two tennis courts with four pickleball courts on the tennis courts, and the tennis backboard will be replaced. And as you can see, this is what the Lawrence School courts look like now. So it'll be a major, major improvement to the people in Woods Hole. They'll be able to stay in Woods Hole, play some tennis and some pickleball. They won't have to travel. In the long run, it'll also cut back on the busyness of all the other courts in town. Again, pickleball is still the fastest-growing sport in the world. It's everywhere. I get calls every day. People want to play where they can play. Again, with Swift Park in Lawrence, and we finished North Falmouth next year. We should have more than enough courts in town. Still might need a few more pickleball courts, but this will be my last rehabilitation of courts in town. These are the last of the town-owned courts.
Okay.
Next slide. And the cost will be, we're going to request, excuse me, we're going to request $250,000, just to make sure we can cover the cost of the courts with the backboard. Not sure what the cost of the handicap access path will be. So to make sure we had enough money, we're going to ask for $250,000, which should give us enough to complete the whole project.
Sounds smart. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? We don't have anything in the chat again, do we? I don't see anything. Okay, sounds like a good plan, Joe. Thank you so much.
My pleasure.
And do I have a motion?
Move that we support this application to the CPC.
I'll second.
Very good, thank you. And all in favor, Ms. Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Mr. Jones?
Jones, aye.
Mr. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
And Brown, aye. So, thank you, Joe.
Thank you, guys. Have a great night.
Thank you, Joe.
See y'all soon.
Okay. Next, community events, special events, Community Painting Day, League of Women Voters, Library Lawn at Pegg Noonan Park, Saturday, October 10, 2020, at 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. That sounds like a very interesting event. I haven't heard of that before, so I'd like to hear about it if somebody wants to tell me. Hello, Pring, how are you?
Good. Hi, thank you for having me here. So, my name's Sarah Pring. I'm with the League of Women Voters of Falmouth. I'm on their Voter Services Committee, and we're doing a whole raft of activities and events to encourage people to vote and to educate them about registering to vote and that sort of thing. And the community mural is one aspect of that, where we want to ask for permission to hold, to build the structure on Pegg Noonan Park, and to also have it, and that would be for it to be painted on on the day, and then for it to remain there until the day after the election. The, we have an artist committed to the project, Jackie Reeves. She's an award-winning artist, and is very experienced with community murals, and has, is creating and has created the design, and the color scheme, and the instruction of how to do it. And she, after the public painting has happened, she'll actually go in to finish the design so that it is, it looks very professional at the end of it, light and shade and highlight and clean it up. So the finished effect will be a very attractive mural to stand, to stand there for the month. We, we have a structure that is solid. It's been built by MidCave. They're donating the resources, the materials and the labor, and they're going to ensure that it is both solid and then it's anchored to the ground securely. We, we plan to have between 30 and 100 people coming to paint on the day, on the painting day. And we, because of COVID, we've actually decided that we're going to try and get the majority of those people to sign up ahead of time, which will allow us to give them instruction about reinforcing social distancing, mask-wearing, et cetera, and make sure that there's not too much of a group at any one time. So I can tell you more about our COVID plans if, if that is of interest or more about the event. I'm not sure how much time I have.
Well, I'm interested in that, but I'm also interested personally in what would the subject matter be of the art?
The, it is simply a call to action to be a voter. And the reason we've chosen that phrase is that there's been research that has shown that if you ask people to identify with a, with an identity rather than an action, they buy into it more. And so it will say be a voter rather than just vote. So on two sides of the three-sided structure, it will have a different, two different designs saying be a voter. And on the, on the backside, the, the last panel, it will have, it will highlight in the design the methods of voting by mail, in person, at the ballot box, at the drop box, so that it, it does actually inform as well.
Okay. Well, that's good. I was wondering where you were going to go with that. So it's just informational, reminding people to vote. That's, that's a positive message. Yes, Mr. Patterson?
Yeah, since there are going to be so many people contributing to this, are there guidelines on what you don't want to see up there? I know that the League is a nonpartisan advocacy group. So are there going to be sort of ground rules?
Absolutely. The, because it's going to be pre-designed, it's, it's really a color by numbers. So the design is nonpartisan. It is sensitive to, you know, race, gender, all, all the things, so that nobody, our effort is to not exclude anybody. And it's, because it's nonpartisan, there's going to be nothing that identifies it with any particular party. And it will be a finished structure, and then we will have a sign which will call on people to understand it's a community endeavor, and it's not designed to be a political statement, and, and to respect it as such. So once it's finished, we're hoping that it will, you know, stand there and nobody will touch it. So that's the plan.
And if they do, you'll have a backup plan to repaint? Say, for instance, people come along in the evening when you're not attending it and make their own message, you might have to do some painting over the next day, right?
Yes, so we would be prepared to do that. We'd hope that wouldn't happen, of course. But we would be prepared to do that. We'll have extra paint and the right colors and...
Hopefully, we won't need that.
I know.
And if we could give back a little bit more to the COVID protocols, because when you first said between 30 and 100 people that day, that's a little concerning. Are we going to have a gatekeeper to keep them spaced out? How will we do that?
Yes. So, so obviously, number one, it's in the open air. Number two, we will require mask-wearing and social distancing. We plan to have a sanitization station, so there will be hand gel, there'll be gloves, and there'll be appropriate garbage bins so that everything can be disposed of on-site, and then we'll remove those at the end of the day. All the materials, the paintbrushes, the paint pots will be single-use, so people will get their pre-filled pot, go and paint, and then that, the brush and the pot will be disposed of. Sorry.
Okay, Ms. Taylor has a question?
So will you have so many people painting at a time and kind of rotate them through?
Exactly. So the, the structure is triangular, so there's three sides. Each panel is eight foot long by four foot high, or four foot, and so there can be two people on one panel at one time, and it, and there would be appropriate social distancing. We will divide the hours into 20-minute time slots. And so at any one time, on the three sides, there could be a total of six people painting. And at the end of that 20 minutes, those people would go, another six people would rotate in. So, and we would have organized with a signup sheet, or we would already have the, the majority of the people signed up. We'd call out their names, they'd be, move into getting their paint pot, and then approach the structure. We, we would, we, we would have some League of Women Voters members there who will be organizing it, directing the flow. We, we don't imagine that there would be, there wouldn't be 100 people there at once. At the most, there would be 18 people per hour. So it, it would be thinned out. And if we found that it happened to be a sunny day, and there happened to be a lot of people, we would simply, you know, have, have a cordon to make sure they couldn't get too close, and they'd be able to, you know, see it from a distance. And just the people who are painting would be up at the actual structure.
Okay, I would think it would be best if you could pre-arrange the days and times that people would come, so you don't have that 100-person day, because that, that could be really too much to manage.
Right, so...
Mr. Patterson?
Yeah, I haven't heard it mentioned, but I assume everybody will be required to wear masks?
Yes, absolutely.
I'm, I'm thinking that people working on the edge of their panel could be right very close to the people just around the corner of that triangular structure.
Yes, that's a good point. No, no one, we, we will make it a prerequisite. In order to paint, you must wear a mask.
Thank you.
And your, your League of Women Voters community protocols are pretty specific, so thank you for that, number one. And number two, I looked at some of the sketches or the designs, and I like those as well. So thank you.
Okay. Any concerns from staff, Mr. Suso?
No, Mr. Chair, no, Mr. Chairman, no concerns expressed.
Okay, very good. Okay, well, I guess that sounds like you're doing the best planning you can, and I really would encourage you again to try to get as many people organized ahead of time as possible, so you don't have that big rush of people. So yes, Mr. Jones? So, yes, Mr. Jones?
Oh, I don't wanna put Sarah on the spot, but today at school I did hear an announcement about another contest that the league is sponsoring for the students to come forward with a piece of art, also with the same message. Are there any more details you can, uh, tell about that? I know it's not.
Oh, sure.
You're doing, but.
I, I don't want to bore you, but we've got two other fantastic projects. One is with high schools, both Falmouth Academy and Falmouth High School, uh, for the kids to produce, it's a voter art competition, this, this time on paper, not on, on a, a structure. Um, so, or in any medium, uh, on, uh, and they're able to, um, to produce something that, that says i- is about being a voter or voting or, um, uh, why it's important to vote. And that, that is running up until the twentieth of October and there's prizes and it's an Instagram-based competition so that it really speaks to the young people. They circulate it peer-to-peer, uh, and, and we're, we're, we're putting up prizes both for the best art and also the most liked image, as in liked, social media-wise, so that we get them to, um, to share it much wider than, than, than we old people could. So, um, so that's the voter art competition with the high schools. And then we're also running a voter art competition with the Falmouth Art Center for their members and friends. And so it's sort of the adult version of, of that, um, not via social media, just, um, the old-fashioned way at, at the art center in their exhibition in one of their, um, one of their galleries.
Great.
Hey, that's a really good outreach program. I'm glad to see you're reaching out to the young people in the schools. Yes, Mr. Patterson?
Have you, uh, worked with FCTV to actually exhibit some of these products? Um, I think it would be a, a great opportunity to get a little wider audience.
I think that would be great. We're, so our plan was to hopefully get the okay here and then we, um, are going to start, uh, our sort of PR campaign in terms of press and, um, FCTV and whatever else, um, you know, the enterprise, take our time, see, see how far afield we can get it covered, um, the radio station, et cetera. So yes, we will definitely invite FCTV, yeah.
Great. Okay, sounds like, uh, you're on the right track. So, uh, is there a motion to approve?
I move approval of the Community Painting Day.
I'll second.
Very good. All in favor, Ms. Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Mr. Jones?
Uh, Jones, aye. I think Sarah does have another question, though.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, so, um, would that be for Pegg Noonan Park? That would.
Yes.
About the library and Pegg Noonan. I think we, we'd like to go with Pegg Noonan Park if we could.
Oh, that's probably better anyway. Okay. All right, so, um, Ms. Taylor voted yes. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
And Mr. Patterson?
Patterson, aye, and thank you.
And Brown, aye. And thanks you for a great idea.
Very much.
Good luck.
Why, I, I, I kick off now. Bye-bye.
Okay, business update on November election and voting by Michael Palmer, town clerk. Is Mr. Palmer with us this evening?
Yes, they just need to, um, bring him online.
Okay, there we go.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm having a little issue here with getting logged in. Uh, you got a blank screen there. I'm not sure why that is.
There's a little button that says start video on the bottom, uh, taskbar that will come up if you move your mouse.
I have a stop video. I don't have a start video.
I think if you hit that, it toggles.
Okay, now I got a bar which says stop video. Now, I'm telling you, stop video.
Well, maybe your camera's just not working for some reason, but we can hear you.
Okay, let me see if I hit this over here, stop video. All right, still, still got a black screen, so if you can hear me, that's fine.
That'll be good.
All right. Hi, how are you? I, I got Michael Palmer, I'm the town clerk. And I missed a little portion of your introduction there, so I assume you want me to speak on the upcoming election and what some of the changes that have taken place with elections.
Yes, please.
Last six months. So, obviously, we've had quite a few changes over the last six months in how we conduct elections in Falmouth. One of the most notable, uh, changes is the expansion of, of voting by mail. Uh, I think in the September primary, more than half of the people voted by early by mail then showed up on Election Day. Uh, and, and the impact that had was that rather than having a fifteen percent turnout for a primary, we ended up having a forty-five percent turnout, uh, it during the primary, which, which says a lot for, uh, people looking for other ways to, to vote rather than just coming on Election Day. So I, I think, uh, voting by mail may be something that, uh, it should be our goal is to increase turnout, so voting by mail obviously has done that. So, uh, right now, I, I do not have the ballots for November yet. I'm hoping to have them early next week or by the middle of next week. I have eleven thousand requests waiting to be mailed out, so that's, that's quite a bit of work that needs to be done once we receive those ballots. But we're getting a lot of phone calls, people asking, uh, where their ballots are and, uh, we just, we just do not have them at this time. Uh, the primary had to get certified and then the ballots had to be approved and then they had to be printed for all three hundred and fifty-one towns and all the different, uh, representative districts. And, and they're in the process of doing that and I'm hoping to see them by, by ear, by early next week. Uh, the last day to apply for a, a voting by mail ballot will be Wednesday before the election, October twenty-eighth. And all ballots need to be returned either by mail or at the drop box on, on the entrance to Town Hall. So it's a, uh, it's a gray, uh, mailbox-looking type of thing. Uh, it does say, uh, Town Hall Drop Box on it. Uh, so that's an option or to use the US Mail to return them to us. Uh, they have to be back, uh, by the close of polls on November third or, and/or be postmarked by, uh, the close of polls on November third in order to, in order to become. Uh, another option for voting, uh, for this November's election is gonna be early voting in person. And this is gonna take place at the old senior center and three hundred Dillingham Ave. And it's going, it's gonna run for two weeks, uh, two weekends. The first, uh, weekend, uh, both weekends actually be Saturday from, uh, eight to one and then on Sunday from, from twelve to five. And then Monday through Friday, both weeks, it'll be eight to four-thirty, uh, Monday through Friday. So we got a two-week period starting the seventeenth of October, running through the Saturday just be, plus before the election. So, yeah, that, that often, you have, uh, voting by mail is an option. And then, of course, you have, uh, voting in person on, on Election Day. Some of the changes that you may see voting in person, we're using poll pads to check people in now and we have eliminated the checkout tape. The poll pad, uh, basically people are checking in the same way they always do. They, they arrive and ask, tell the poll worker their name and address and they search for the name and address on the poll pad and check them in, using that, uh, electronically. Uh, another option, which, which I will say is not a requirement, and I have to repeat that it's not a requirement, but if you scan the barcode on your license, the camera on the poll pad will pick up the barcode and you will, and it will be, facilitate checking yourself in. Uh, for, for example, with myself, a Michael Palmer, if I went and just gave my name, three Michael Palmer's show up. If I go and scan the barcode on my license, just one, uh, uh, just one Michael Palmer shows up. So it's more efficient, but again, I have to emphasize because, uh, it's not the law, but it just facilitates checking people in. It's not a requirement. I just wanna have to emphasize that, so. Uh, so, uh, just, just to sum up, that, that, there's the three options, one voting in, in, uh, voting by mail and that's starting. Hopefully, we'll get the ballots in. Again, I have eleven thousand. Uh, early voting at the old senior center and then voting in person, uh, on, on Election Day.
Okay.
So this raises, just one more thing I have to say. So this raises a question for discussion either now or at a future date, is this does not apply to our municipal elections. So if we want to pla- apply early voting, which our goal is to increase turnout, and this obviously shows that we've done. So we'll have to have some discussion on, on special legislation to make that available for our municipal election. Uh, we'll also discuss, it will have to be on, on the back end of it, how, how we, uh, uh, you know, it's making, it's making it easy for people to vote, but also it's, it's very, very hard to process. And e- even though the poll pad says there's three Michael Palmer's in town, there's really only one that's working on elections. And it's really, uh, the staff and the town clerk's office and, and a group of election workers have really put in some dedicated hours in order to pull this off, uh, for the most part, with, with very few mistakes, uh, be able, everyone be able to vote in person. Uh, happy to answer any questions anybody has, so.
Mr. Jones has a question for you.
So when I did vote in September, I was asked for my license, which was no problem. Do we have any idea how many people actually use the license for voting, uh, in person and how many people stuck to the, uh, saying their name and address?
I, I, I would say it's probably half and half and, and I'd be interested, and, and again, it kinda, I, I emphasize that this is not a requirement, so I've been, I've been telling poll workers to be passive about it. If somebody offers you the license, then you take it, but you, you really shouldn't be asking for a license. So if you say you were asked for a license and I really need to follow up with our poll workers to make sure they're not asking for a license and they are, it's a passive, uh, a passive thing. If somebody gives the license, uh, then they'll accept it, but if it's not, uh, it's not being accepted, they just do it by name.
It was a suggestion I could use my license if I wanted to.
Okay, the, so the person at the door may have explained that to you, uh, it wasn't necessarily the person checking you in.
Right.
Okay, so, so. I just wanna emphasize to them, and I will follow up with the people that are controlling the door, that it is an option, uh, and not a requirement.
I understood that.
Okay, good.
Yeah, Mr. Patterson?
I have a question about the mail-in ballots. Uh, I know that there's been a lot of questioning, I guess, about whether somebody that sends in a mail-in ballot will have it actually reported, if you will, including cutting off processing mail-in ballots after a certain number of hours after the polls for in-person election actually occur. How are the mail-in ballots going to be counted?
The ma- mail-in ballots, uh, again, uh, we need them back, uh, or postmarked on Election Day. Any, anything that is postmarked on or before Election Day will be counted. Uh, right now, the mail-in ballots are being counted, and this is another change to election law. They allow us to pre-tabulate them. So on, on specific days which we designate, we will open those envelopes that have been returned to us by mail and we'll be running them through, through a tabulator. This is open to the public to, uh, watch and, and to, uh, ha- if they have any questions as we're going through the process. But, uh, it was nine days prior to the election, I think, we were able to pre-tabulate the ballots. I mean, open those envelopes, take the ballots out and put them through, through the tabulator. They all get counted on Election Day or before Election Day. Uh, uh, the ones that won't necessarily be, be counted before Election Day are the ones that are postmarked that we're receiving the next day. And I, I'm not sure how they're gonna expect us to be counting them, but the only way that I know of right at this point is to count those by hand and then get added into the official totals. Uh, because we're coming up with the election results on Election Night by, uh, by merging all our, our, our memory cards from all the tabulators and we come up with election results that will be announced, uh, or we give out to the public. But then we have to add in certain things like overseas ballots are counted by hand, any provisional ballots. Somebody that showed up the polls and their name may not be on the voting list, but I swear that they should be. That's a provisional ballot. We'll do some research and if those need to be counted, they'd be counted after the fact. Uh, so everything, uh, again, postmarked on Election Day may be counted, not on Election Day, but you may be getting them Tuesday and Wednesday for that matter. And those will, you have to be counted. As far as I know right now, we'll have to count those by hand.
Thank you.
I, I have a question for you. Do the, do those, um, votes, are those kept confidential until Election Day? I mean, as far as what the totals are?
Y- yes, absolutely. Uh, uh, it's, it's a felony to actually give out any of those elections results before, uh, Election Day and we're signing affidavits to that effect that we cannot give out that information prior to.
Okay, that's important. I have another question if I could, if everybody else is all set for now. So, um, when I, I wanted to try out the voting by mail, so I did it in the last election, or the primary, I should say. And, uh, I had to sign my request for ballot and mail it in. And I've been told recently that the legislature just approved, um, people can request ballots without having a signed form. Have you heard that or is that just some kind of a rumor?
Well, there is a portal, uh, on the Secretary of State's, uh, website that allows you to log in and re- and, and request a ballot, like, uh, uh, an application be sent electronically. Uh, so is there a verification prop- process there where people aren't signing, as you say, an application and then signing the ballot? They will be signing the ballot once it gets returned back to us and we would need to verify their signature on the ballot envelope that's returning to us against any information we have in their office that contains their, uh, signature uh, if they aren't giving us a signature on the application. So we would have to go back to their registration card uh, in our files that we have in our office for any of those that, uh, we received that don't have a, 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 an app, a signature. But it's a concern of some clerks that, for example, go to a nursing home, uh, uh, you know, can we receive, uh, requests from forty people in a nursing home that not necessarily electronically, uh, uh, capable of doing that? And I would have to question whether those are coming from, uh, a supervisor at the, uh, nursing home or the actual individual residents of the nursing home. So I would be making telephone calls to verify that individual residents are actually requesting them versus a activities director.
Okay.
There's a process we need to go through to verify that these ballots are coming from legitimate sources.
Yes, Mr. Patterson?
Yes, one more question, Michael. I know there have been insinuation that people could actually vote twice. Uh, what's the checks that we use? You know, I think it's your office that's responsible to make sure that a single person isn't allowed to cast more than one vote.
Okay. Every ballot that comes back into our office has a barcode on it. We are scanning that into our, our, our state database and that is uploaded on a daily basis to the poll pads. Uh, so if anybody comes in and, and, and wants to register uh, or wants to vote in person, it's just say, and they've already returned a ballot by mail, the poll pad will say that. You've already, a ballot is already received, received in our office by mail. You're not allowed to vote. Uh, the flip side of that is you could have, somebody could have mailed in a ballot and they come in and vote and, and they, and, and they vote in person and we upload that information at the end of the night. Then when we go to process the ballot, it's gonna say this person voted in person and then we will be rejecting and spoiling the ballot that was received by mail. So under our system, there's, there's virtually no way that could, that could possibly happen.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Stubb, Johnson Stubb?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to mention, and certainly Michael can correct me if I'm mistaken, but I did recently check online for how to go online and register to apply for a ballot as opposed to doing it through the mail. And I did note that that online process also does require a signature. So they'll accept a, you, you sign it and then you have to scan it back in again and return, and, and submit it to the state. Um, but my understanding was that even that online ballot request form does require a signature from the voter.
Okay, that's good, Joe.
Yeah, the portal that Doug was, was, was speaking of, there are some issues that has been resolved. I have been, uh, swirling around as to what the validity of that is, if a signature is required or not required. The ballot coming back has to have a signature on it. We need to verify that against any potential, uh, documents we have in the office. And, and, and the, uh, the voting card would be the one that would have their signature verified that against. But as you bring that up, there is a, on our website, a, a link and on the Secretary of State's, uh, website, a link to, uh, track my ballot. And if you go into there, you can, uh, punch in your information where you're registered, probably your date of birth, and it'll show you whether we have received your application, whether we mailed your ballot and whether you've returned it and we have received it back. A- as of right now, because we haven't mailed any ballots, everyone's, uh, if they go to that portal, it all, it all is listing as being pending, pending until we actually mail them out. When we mail them out, we will enter that into our computer saying when, when we mail those out. So that's a good tool for people to look for.
So, uh, if people do vote twice, is that cumbersome to the system?
Okay, the, the way our system works, you wouldn't be allowed to vote twice. So.
Okay.
You, if you voted in person and we already received a mail-in ballot, the poll pad would tell us you have already voted and we wouldn't allow you to vote second. If you voted in person and we receive a ballot back in the mail, our system will say you voted in person and we would spoil that, uh, we would spoil that ballot. It does cause a little bit extra work to determine whether this is legitimate, it sure does. So, a- and, and if somebody is attempting to do that, it is fraud. I mean, they're, they're liable and there, there are penalties for trying to vote twice.
That was my next question, if there was a penalty for attempting to vote twice.
Certainly, certainly are. You're, you're reporting under the penalty of perjury. I believe there's a, a ten thousand dollar fine at a minimum and a year in jail for trying to, uh, vote fraudulently.
Okay, that's good for people to know. All right, thank you very much for that. Any other questions from the board? Excellent. Well, thank you, Michael. I feel much better about the, uh, security of our voting process now.
Here, here.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, I guess the next thing be discussion and update on COVID-19 issues with Mr. Scott McGann. Good evening, Mr. McGann.
Can you see me all right?
Yes, sir.
All right, so. This past week, I think we talked last week, so this past week has almost been a carbon copy of last week. 12 cases we're at, well, that was last week, so we're at. 268 is our total case count. Looking at last week's data, we're about the same in terms of our positivity. We're still under 1%, but. .83, our lowest was .31, so. You know, for us, I mean, for the state, we're still in the green, we're still doing okay, but there has been, you know, we have been up. Between the five and 10 per week count that is on our high side. Not the less than five that we've had on our real good weeks. The state in general has been a little bit up, if you've noticed, the percent positivity, if you look at the state every day, is a little bit higher. It was at. .8, now it's at .9, so. It's a little bit higher at the state, you know, but we're still holding our own. You know, being in the green is where we've been most of the time since that chart was. We've had a few, a couple of weeks in the gray, where we're less than five cases total in 14 days. Most of our weeks have been in the green. We've not been in the yellow or the red yet. So, you know, we're doing our own with contact tracing, the ones that, you know, that come up in the queue. We're also at the Health Department working on a flu clinic on the 26th to do a drive-through clinic, so we are working on our flu clinic, trying to do a drive-through by appointment only. So the information should be coming out by the end of the week, once we figure out our little details that need to be figured out with those. It's a little bit different, so I'm going to be walking in at the senior center like you used to do and get a shot, so we have to do this in a more controlled manner, so we're looking at a drive-through by appointment. And so detail should be coming out on that, because there's a lot of demand. For flu shots, I was at the clinic in Barnstable County this past weekend, and we had from eight to 12, we did 570 people at that clinic. With probably three quarters of that within the first hour and a half, so. There's quite a demand for flu shots, so, you know, we'll put information out for our clinic probably by the end of the week. But getting back to COVID, you know, a case count's 268. We are averaging about between five and 10 a week, you know, maybe. I'd say our average is right around six or seven right now per week, so. That's where we're at, and usually I just try to leave it open for questions, because you guys might have some questions for me.
Anybody have a question for Mr. McGann? Yes, Sam?
Yeah, the slight increase in Massachusetts, I know there are some schools that have started in class. For students, education for students. Is that correlated to the increase in the number of active cases in Massachusetts?
I'm not, you know, I try to stay in my lane, so I'm really familiar with Falmouth as opposed to what's going on in the other state, the other towns, nothing on that. We have twice a week calls with the state, nothing's come up on the state or the reason why. That's the only way I would know unless, you know. I heard in the news like you would have, so again, I'm just trying, normally I stay in my lane and don't know exactly what's going on in the other places.
Sounds like your internet breaking down there, Mr. McGann.
Oh, sorry about that.
Okay. I just got a note that my internet is unstable.
No, it's a blame in me, huh?
Take yours one garbled voice.
Yeah, the best thing I could say, it's been, you know, sort of a carbon copy of last week, and the cases are, you know, we do get a couple that are out of state tests, they come off maybe eventually. And a couple local ones that pop up, and that's kind of where we're at, and. We just hope that those don't become 10 or 20, and that's what you do with the contact tracing, it's kind of where we're at with it. You know, the school's opening, we've been meeting with the schools every week. I've got my nurse part-time, they've got their public health nurse, you know, superintendent, and we're looking at, you know. We've met a couple of times and we'll keep meeting and talking and working things through as they pop up.
One of your things to keep you busy, right?
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's see, update on water quality issues with Mr. McConity, DPW Director. Good evening, Mr. McConity.
Good evening.
So we got that water quality letter and a lot of people were a little confused and. Wondering about the, kind of the first part of the letter said that, you know, it's not really that dangerous, but the second part. Seemed to be like a lot of disclaimers that were more concerning, so. Can you tell us why it has to be worded that way?
Yeah, so I think before we talk about the letter that went out, I'm going to go back and I'm going to go through the DEP regulations of the tier violations and tier exceedances.
Oh, good.
So the way, so the way the Mass D O T work, the Mass D E P works is you get three tier exceedances. You can have an exceedance one. An exceedance two and exceedance three. An exceedance one is if you had an E. coli hit and it had fecal matter in it, so it's. Back in 2010, town of Falmouth, several, several water superintendents ago, we had the. The boil water mandate. And that, a tier one requirement is that you have to reach out to residents in 24 hours. So we know it's impossible to reach out to residents in 24 hours if by a letter. By snail mail or by those types of means. But what happens is we would be in contact with the dispatch center, the emergency dispatch center over at the police station. Chris Campbell, and Chris would get in contact with the Barnstable County Sheriff's Department. And they'd do a reverse 911 call. And then also along with that, what we would do is we would have notices put out on a radio station, would have notices put out on FCTV. And would take our message boards and put our message boards out on the roadway. So if we had a tier one hit and we had to act within 24 hours. We could get that out in approximately eight to 10 hours. If it happened in an afternoon, we could have it out that evening by reverse 911. For a tier two violation, it's a 30-day. It's a 30-day notice once the operator or the department becomes aware of the exceedance. And that's actually what this was, was a tier two exceedance. And then a tier three exceedance is an annual notice, and a tier three is more like. If the town of Falmouth did not send out the water quality confidence report. Or the town of Falmouth did not report to the Mass D E P. Their monthly numbers for reporting, for the numbers, our disinfection numbers, our turbidity numbers. So that would be a tier three, would be on an annual basis. So with this tier two that went out, our water department working, we knew in early, because of the, because of the warm weather. The hot sun, the warm weather and the no rain, the conditions over the, and during the month of basically. May, June, July and August, it just made the conditions, well, we had additional algae growth in the pond. And the algae growth got into the plant. So our operators knew in early August that we were getting exceedances. They were not that bad at the time. And then as it started getting in towards the mid, towards the end of August, they had several exceedances that were higher. And you're allowed .3, they were getting .65. So the way it works with a turbidity exceedance is it has, you have to be 95%. So you have 5% that can be over for the month, but it has to be 95% confidence that all of the turbidity exceedances are within that range of .3. So what had happened is towards the end of the month, that put us over the .3 for the turbidity exceedance. So what happens is at that time, our water operators notified our water superintendent. And we're also in consultation with the Mass D E P, and the Mass D E P. Told us, they came back in an email and said, you need to put a tier two notice out. So with the mass, with the tiers, the tier one, the tier two, the tier three. Mass D E P is very restrictive on their verbiage in their forms. And the way that we report out, the specific ways we report out to the public. So with that letter that went out. The, it was a two-page letter, a front and back of a letter. The front page of that letter was all written by Water Superintendent Stephen Rafferty. And the chief water operator, Matt DeZina, the whole front page was, and basically we wanted to put the information out to the public. To say, this is what's going on, this is how it happened, and this is how we're doing the corrections of it. The second side of that form, that's all information that's in the document from the Mass D E P. So you're required to have that documentation in there when that goes out. So that's how that happens with the Mass D E P, with their forms. And just the, when you put the letter, the wording of the letter, how the letter is formed, that's all through Mass D E P, and then we just. Add in the areas that we add in of how it happened, where we are and how we fixed it. So Mass D E P is very restrictive and it can be very confusing. To us, the water operators and the plants, so we are in constant. You know, emails or discussions with the DEP when we do have some types like this with exceedances. Because you're allowed to have an exceedance, but once you go over that 5% exceedance. And you get below 95%, that's when you have to put out a public documentation.
Okay, yes, Mr. Patterson?
Yes, I think it's important that. Get a better explanation of what turbidity is all about. I mean, a glass of orange juice has an enormous turbidity, right? So the question I have is, for our particular drinking water. I suspect you could not even see the level of turbidity that kicked this tier two classification into effect. What's the biological hazard associated with that? Can you put that in context?
Yeah, so what happens, the way the plant works, so. The, we take the water in from the plant, it goes to a flash mixer, it puts in the coagulation, it goes into the flocculation. It gets rid of all the, the heavy sediments, puts them all together, it sinks them to the bottom, gets rid of, screens it off. You get the finest, the finest suspended solids that are in the water itself, and they're very hard to settle out or they're very slow to settle out. Though, that's the water that goes over and goes into the filtration, gets through our filters, and it goes through our. Gets into our clearwell before we put disinfection and it gets into our clearwell before we put it out into the system. That's what we're looking at, and basically what it is in the old days. They would actually have, it was basically like a shield, it looked like a disc, almost like a target out of firing range. And they'd go out in the middle of the pond and then put it down so many feet in the pond, and it's basically the clarity of how you can see that. Disc in the pond at a certain distance down in the water. Today, at the plant, what we do is it's all automated, it's all through the computer system. And actually, the computer system at our plant, it measures turbidity every four hours. So you're getting multiple readings of the turbidity at our plant. Per day, right, so if you got 24 divided and you're doing it every four hours, you're getting six measurements a day. So what happens is, because we had the hot weather, because we had the no rain. The warm nights, the pH in the pond, it ends up going up in the day. And it ends up lowering at night, and at nighttime is when you get the more algae and then it gets sucked into the plant, so. We were taking more algae into the plant, and that's what happens, but you're absolutely right this time. With .3 NTUs of turbidity, you cannot see that, it's unnoticed. The concern through the DEP, what they have is with the turbidity, is that. The turbidity with the algae, it starts eating up the disinfection. So as it goes to our plant, the last. Form of disinfection that we do before we put it under the clearwell is we put chlorine into it. So we'll have a residual at the end of the line. If we, if you have large amounts of turbidity in it, it eats up that chlorine, so when it gets out into the system, by the time it gets down to Woods Hole or over to Wacoit. Or over to East Falmouth, you, the possibility of having a lower value for a residual is there. So what our water operators do, did is they monitored the turbidity, noticed that turbidity was going up, so we added more chlorine, so we'd have a residual. But you want to balance the chlorine out, you don't want to have the numbers going, going high. We've been doing very good with the chlorine at the plant and we want to stay at the lower numbers on it. But that's the concern, it's not the turbidity that's a health factor, it's the effects that the turbidity could. Cause in the water by sucking up the disinfection.
I have a question if I could.
I can say, I am not an expert at this water. I'm learning about it, I know about it, I've had a lot of dealings with Steve, a lot of dealings with the plant. I am not a water superintendent by far, but I have a pretty good understanding of how our system and how our plant work, so.
I have a question for you. When I toured the plant before it was operational, I think that there was a reverse osmosis capacity. But Mr. Rafferty said that we probably wouldn't even need to use that. Do we actually use that or do we have that? Can you remind me about that?
Uh, yeah, no, no, so what we have is, is it. It's not reverse osmosis, it's, it's the, it's a supercharged, it's the supercharged water. I'm thinking about, yeah, it's a supercharged water, what happens is it goes through, the water goes through the coagulation, the disinfection, the filters. And then it goes outside through this supercharged water, and that basically kills all remaining bacteria in the water. Then it comes back in, it goes through our chlorine, we put the chlorine residual into it, and then it goes out into our system. And that is fully functioning, and that's fully, that's functioning in 24 hours a day.
Okay.
Remember the ozone instead of the reverse osmosis?
The ozone, correct, yeah.
Okay, and then in the future, when we have to send out these letters, I guess this will be a question for our new superintendent when he comes online in a couple of weeks. But it seems like at the end of the letter that the town sends out. Maybe there should be a little information at the bottom saying, on the reverse side of this letter is mandatory. Warnings from the DEP, not specifically related to our town or something like that, so people can understand better. What, you know, where that's coming from.
Yeah, we might, that we might want to have some formal language that we, if we do win any, any letters that we do put out in the future. Not sure if we would want to put something in there that says, not specific to the town of Falmouth. We might want to just put something out there to say that this, this information is required from an exceedance level through the Mass D E P forms. But I don't know if I would say it's not representative or does not reflect the town of Falmouth, I think we.
Yeah, that was probably a bad choice of words, but just something to make people understand that that's just some mandatory language that. It's not something that we've chosen to write, because I think that's where people are getting confused about it.
Right, right, but like I say, if it was a tier one exceedance, we would have, it would have been a different method of delivery. I mean, this one went into the newspaper, it was delivered to the residents, but. And just for the timing of the letter, there was some questions on the timing of the letter, so. We had the exceedances at the end of August, so our water superintendent was notified it on September 1st. So during that week of September 1st, we put the letter together, had the letter finalized, went through it, reviewed it. The following week, that Monday was Labor Day, that Tuesday, it came back into our office, we had to populate. A database through the assessors department. Every day, there's a real estate exchanges, whatever, so we had to make sure we had the right. Owners of properties for everybody in Falmouth. So we collected that, we finalized the letter, and we do not send it out in-house, it does not come out of Public Works. We have a company in Conton that the information gets mailed to, they mail it out to all the residents, so that was several more days that. The letter was sent out to them, they formulated, they populated, they put the mailings together and then they mail it out. So that's why the residents didn't get mailed out to the 17th, and I think the residents were getting the letter on the 18th, 19th, 20th.
Yeah, it's pretty variable. Some people are getting them much later, from what I've been told.
Right.
And then my final question is, if we do ever have something that's more serious, for whatever reason, and we want to try that reverse 911 call. Does that effectively contact cell phone users? Because a lot of people aren't using landlines anymore.
Yeah. I believe if this is more of a question for Chris Campbell with the emergency dispatch center. But I believe if the cell phone is registered cell phone and it's in the system, that it will reverse 911 out to that cell phone. And contact that person.
Okay, maybe we should ask Mr. Campbell how that works and if somebody needs to actually register a cell phone or what the process would be for that.
I know we had done it back in 2010, 2011 when we had the boil water, I know we did the reverse call and that also went through the county.
Correct. And Mr. Suso wanted to say something?
I just want to note that, uh, Mr. Campbell is with us as an attendee, so he could be brought on, uh, into the conversation, uh, at this point.
That'd be great. Mr. Patterson?
Yeah, well, I'm going to defer to Mr. Campbell because, uh, I know I've gotten emergency alerts over my cell phone. And so I don't know that it's particularly registered to be in Falmouth at any given time, but we do get them.
Okay.
But I'll let, let Chris answer that.
Evening, Mr. Campbell. Can you answer that question? I don't know if you heard it, uh, just curious if, if people use cell phone rather than the landline, is there anything they need to do to have that phone, uh, listed? So that they get a call on the reverse nine-one-one for an emergency?
I did hear the question. Um, I would have to check with the county, um, for the, for the specific information on Falmouth. Uh, the county uses a program called Code Red. Um, in my experience, uh, previously with Code Red is that, um, it will use any landline-based phone numbers. Uh, and then if folks have, uh, registered their cell phone numbers in the system, uh, it will call those numbers. I can't speak specifically to the way the county has it set up, uh, but I can certainly, uh, ask that question, get that information and report back at a later time.
That would be great. And maybe we could put that on the town's website and a little alert notice that if you want to stay informed and, uh, get notifications on emergencies, then you should register your cell phone. Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate you being around for that.
No problem.
Any other questions about the water letter or any other comments? And anything from the public on, nothing on the chat? Okay, Mr. McConney, anything else you want? Any last comments for us or?
No, I, well, I would put out, I, I'd like to put out a plug that we, uh, at this time, we're, um, have a project up in, uh, Technology Park. We're repainting our, uh, low-level, uh, water tank up there. It's a three million gallon tank, uh, was built in nineteen eighty-eight. Um, so, um, Steve Rafferty had started this uh, months ago, approximately six, six months ago, maybe eight months ago. Um, the project, the, uh, tank is offline, it's been drained, uh, they're, they're, uh, up and running. It's all been encapsulated, they're, they're, uh, sandblasting it. And we're looking to have it painted, uh, by mid-November. So, uh, that brought that, uh, and it's a, it's a fifty-year epoxy paint that they use on that. It's for the, uh, they're painting the outside of the tank and also the inside of the tank. So it's a, uh, it's a fifty-year lifespan on that. So we won't have to be worrying about that.
What do they use for staging on the inside of that tank?
Uh, I believe it's so, I'm not allowed in there. The contractors, because of OSHA rules and regulations, I'm not allowed in there. It's only registered users that can be in there and licensed people that can be used in there. But my understanding is they have like a balancing system. It's like a paint balancing system that's on arms with a weight on one side and a sandblaster or a painter on the other side. And it's basically this, this tube that just goes down and it goes around the tank and it just sandblasts as it goes.
Oh, it's a giant machine.
It's a machine. It gets it down. It's done by robotics. It gets it down to the bottom. They clean out the bottom. And then it comes back up and then they change the paint heads out on it and they start doing it with the paint. So, um, you know, multiple coats, it's, it's something I do want to see, but I, I, it won't allow me close enough. So I'll have to rely on our engineers to get in there to be able to give us more information.
Right. Interesting. Thank you for sharing that. Okay. Yes, Mr. Jones?
I guess just a reminder that we have not changed our regulations on watering.
Uh, no, not at this time, not at this time. So with the tech, tank, tank park being, uh, tank being offline, um, that's three million gallons that feeds West Falmouth. So, uh, we're looking to get the tank painted, get it back online, refilled and put it out. And then we'll be looking at taking the restrictions down, um, for the watering. And I'm gonna hold for our new water superintendent, superintendent to come in. But I think over the, the fall season and the winter months, um, we're gonna need to have discussions for, uh, for, for next season as far as, uh, water usage, uh, however it might be, if it's voluntary or however it might be. But, um, you know, this past year and in years past, we've been basically at maximum, uh, capacity for, uh, for our pumps. Our pumps are running twenty-three hours a day out of the twenty-four hours. So I just think it's, it's a, uh, conversation that our new water superintendent, myself and town manager, selectmen want to have before, next, next summer will be on us before, uh, before long, so.
Right. Good idea. Thank you. Okay. Well, thank you for coming in. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
Well done.
Okay. The sign variance request has been withdrawn, I understand, for ocean, green ocean car wash. So they're gonna just go ahead and build their sign to the, according to the, uh, rules and regulations that we have. So the next thing then, town meeting petition article presentation, article number four, Jay Zavala for the Barnstable County Agricultural Society Incorporated. Good evening. And Mr. Zavala, you're muted, so you'll have to unmute your mic. There you go. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, for the record, I'm Jay Zavala. I'm a resident of Falmouth and a town meeting member. I'm zooming in today to present, uh, for the, uh, Board of Directors of the, uh, Barnstable County Agricultural Society. I'm also the petitioner for the warrant article number four. It'll go before, uh, the town, uh, to, uh, ask Falmouth to enter into a two-pilot agreements with the developer owner of the Fairgrounds Solar Carport project's property that will be considered by town meeting. Um, and thank you all for this opportunity. So, Mr. Chairman, uh, I've coordinated a short, under five-minute presentation with the town information technology department. Uh, thanks to Mr. Thomas Cook, who made that possible, and I appreciate his professionalism. So as agreed, you're going to hear me call for each page a- as I ask for them to come up. And what you're looking at right now is page number one. Page two. So, uh, I'd like to introduce, uh, the carport uh, project team. Wendy Brown is the general manager of the fairgrounds and a Mashpee resident. There are two representatives of Soul Systems Incorporated. The firm develops and owns the planned Fairgrounds Solar Carport project. Mr. Rennie Friedman, Director of Project Development, and Ms. Anna Narcus, Senior Manager of Business Development. Our objective this evening is to ask for and receive a positive recommendation from the Board of Selectmen for Article, uh, four. Page three, please. So this is the specific language of Article four. I'm prepared to read it aloud, but in the interest of time, I'll note that the article has survived legal review and the town's director of assessing, Patricia Faluli, is aware and fully informed of our objective. So with that and with your permission, uh, I'll ask Mr. Friedman of Soul Systems to continue with the presentation.
Very well. Thank you and welcome, Mr. Friedman.
Thank you so much, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Um, can everybody hear me? Okay.
Yes.
Excellent. Uh, great. Um, so again, for the record, uh, Rennie Friedman, uh, Director of Project Development for Soul Systems. Um, we were, uh, before you about a year ago, um, with an Article two, to add the solar overlay zone, uh, to this area, uh, the, the large-scale ground mount solar overlay zone. Uh, so I'll just real briefly go through some of the specifics of the projects just to, um, to kind of reintroduce everyone to the project. Uh, so if you could go to the next slide, please. Excellent. So I'm pretty sure everyone is, is familiar with, uh, where the fairgrounds are. And we are doing, uh, two integrated projects, uh, which is why there's two pilot, um, there will ultimately be two separate pilot, um, agreements. Uh, over on the west, you can see, we call that Barnstable West. Uh, and then on the east, we call it, uh, Barnstable East. Those are kind of the, the project names that, that we use. And again, you can see that they're not, uh, the project will not encompass all of the parking areas. Uh, there's a large lot in the southeast corner. You can see that we are purposely not doing, uh, the, uh, any, any solar carports on. Um, and the areas of the projects are roughly twenty acres for west and ten acres for, for east. So it's just kind of a, a ballpark number to, uh, to give a little bit of order of magnitude there. Uh, you can go to the next slide, please. Thank you. So, so here's a, a site plan. Uh, again, roughly the same viewpoint of what we were looking at from the aerial photograph. And again, here you can see west, which is about twenty acres east, which is about ten. And what you're looking at here, everything in, uh, blue, it are the actual carports and are going to be the, uh, solar panels. So again, even in this layout, you can see it takes up, um, a fair amount of the parking area and you'll be able to park underneath, but, but not the entire thing. There will still be, uh, a lot of green space out there as well. You can go to the next slide, please. Here is just a general picture of what a solar carport is. Um, they have them over at Canyon's Market that, you know, there's, there's a number of other places that have them. Have them as well. They are becoming more, more common. Um, there's many different shapes and sizes, um, and, and styles. But just to give a kind of general overview and of course to know, our, our project will have no new asphalt paving, um, associated with it. So this is just a pretty general one. It's, it's over an asphalt parking lot, just to, just to give you a visual. Uh, you can go to the next slide. Great, thank you. So just an update on the project itself. Um, again, at last, uh, November's town meeting, uh, we were granted our zoning, uh, via the, you know, approval of the article to add the, uh, the large-scale ground mount solar overlay zone here. Um, we had our site plan approved by the Falmouth Planning Board, uh, at the end of last, last month. Um, so our site plan has been formally, um, formally approved. Uh, we also hit a tremendous project milestone just last week. We got our fully executed interconnection service agreements, uh, from Eversource. Anytime you do a solar project and you connect to the grid, you obviously need to go through a very extensive coordination process, uh, with, with the, with the utility company. And obtaining the signed interconnection agreements was a, was a great milestone for the project. And we just got those last week. So we're very excited about that. And right now our anticipated construction start is going to be in the spring of next year. And we're hoping to wrap everything up by the end of the year. Go to the next slide. Great, thank you. So the, the article in front of you, uh, is to enter into a pilot agreement. And, uh, so the question is why, why approve a pilot? So pilot, uh, stands for payment in lieu of tax. And it's important here because in Massachusetts, solar projects, uh, that are built to generate electricity for sale to the grid, which this project is, are, are not exempt from personal property taxes. Uh, but instead, per the Massachusetts Department of Revenue, uh, these projects are allowed by state law to enter into a payment in lieu of tax or pilot. Um, and what that does is it sets the amounts for the real and personal property taxes associated with the solar project. Um, the pilot rate can vary. It's set by the local, uh, tax assessor who has been, um, involved in this process. And it's based on various attributes of the projects, including system size, cost, revenues, operating expenditures. Now, a number of factors going to, to determining what that rate is. So that's kind of what the pilot is. But again, you know, why, why it's important for both sides really is that it provides, uh, tax, uh, certainty for, for the town and also for the company, uh, owning and operating the the project, which in this case would be Soul Systems. Uh, again, it's, it sets the amount. It's very important. And it's a, a much more, uh, fairer situation than try and apply for, um, uh, a partial exemption, um, for tax on the project. So that is really the, uh, extent of our presentation tonight. I'll turn it back over to Jay.
Thank you very much.
So we managed to get it done in less than five minutes.
Okay.
Are there any, are there any questions?
And questions from the board? Mr. Jones?
I would just clarify that we do not vote the recommendations tonight.
Right. That's my understanding, right.
I have a question. Uh, on the map that you showed, it looked, I don't know, it's just an artist surrendering, but, uh, it looked like some of the, uh, panels were drawn as one giant solid mass where other, uh, on the southerly portion, it looked like there was lines of delineation between the panels. Is that just an artist concept thing or is that really the?
I, I think it's more just because of how zoomed out it is. Um, the panels will in general be in groups or kind of larger blocks. Um, but then, uh, if, if you remember what the carport photo looked like, that was probably a better representation where, you know, there'll be a group of panels, say, five by twenty, uh, that's kind of, you know, functions almost as one big panel, but there are tiny gaps in there. And then, then, then there's a more, um, then there's a larger space between the next group of five by twenty. So instead of a couple inches in between the panels, it might be, say, eight to, eight to twelve feet.
Mr. Jones?
The second question had to do with the interconnection agreement you received, uh, from Eversource. Was there any indication of what continued flexibility there is? Just because I know the town, so the EDIC is also planning on putting in solar. And I'm not sure that whether they've already gone through their agreement or is there the possibility that this plan will shut the, them off from having the freedom to connect also?
So I'm, I'm, I'm not sure what status the, the town's, um, interconnection is with Eversource. Um, every single project that, that wants to interconnect, uh, has to go through the same process. Um, and Eversource is, uh, Eversource processes those applications in the order in, uh, in which they come in. So, so I'm, I'm not sure of, of what the status of the, of the town's project is. Um, we do have to, as part of our project, pay Eversource, uh, um, a, a fee for them to do system upgrades on their end to accommodate our, uh, our system.
Okay. Mr. Suso, are you familiar with the, uh, interconnection agreement for our phase two solar? Has that been secured already? Do you know?
I'm not familiar with the status of that. Um, it's possible the town council might have some further insight, uh, that they are, I believe, still with us. If not, um, we'll get back to the board. Uh, we'll determine that and get back to the board.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so back to my question about the spacing of the panels. The reason I ask is, um, just wondering how you're thinking through the long-term viability of the grass parking lot? Cause if the grass all dies and it's all just dirt, is that, are we properly managing the, the site? I'm wondering about that.
Yeah. So that is a great question. Um, that is something that we spent a lot of time and thought, um, looking into it. There's, there's not, we actually couldn't find a similar project like this where, uh, it had already been done. And by that, I mean installing carports over a non-paved, uh, parking lot. Um, so what we've come up with, and this was actually a detail in our site plan that the, um, that was approved by the planning board last month, is that directly under the carports themselves, so directly under the solar panels, we're going to be putting in, uh, crushed stone or crushed gravel. So it will still be, uh, pervious in that will allow stormwater to drain through and filter through the stone and filter in, into the existing soils. But it will prevent, uh, the issue of having, you know, a big field of mud or grass that can't otherwise grow. Um, so you kind of get the best of both worlds there. Um, while everything outside of the, uh, everything that's not directly underneath the, the panels and it's in those parking areas, that will still be grassed, just, just as it is currently.
Okay. That sounds like a good idea. All right. And any other questions from the board? Okay. Well, since we don't have an answer to the Mr. Jones's question about the, uh, interconnection, I wonder if our motion to approve this should include the fact that it doesn't conflict with.
We'll approve it tonight anyway, Doug.
Oh, right. Okay.
We'll make the recommendations at another meeting.
It's just informational tonight? Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much for your time, everybody.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's see. Update on fire department staffing, update on fire department staffing from Acting Chief Tim Smith.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have Tim Smith joining us as well as, uh, Chris Campbell from our communication center, uh, as needed. And, uh, I'll pass the mic to, uh, Tim to provide the summary. You, you had received, uh, a written report. And uh, I'll pass the mic to uh, Tim to provide the summary. You, you had received a, a written report.
Yes.
Including an email from me with a uh, significant information from Acting Chief uh, Smith on the staffing. Uh, in the uh, voluntary staffing in the West Falmouth uh, area. So uh, I'll allow Chief Smith to comment further at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening all.
Good evening.
Um, yeah, as uh, as Mr. Suso uh, pointed out, uh, we've been uh. You know, looking at the, the information regarding our uh. Well, uh, data and uh, staffing information based on uh, the July first start. Um, and that information, I believe, hopefully was everybody received also. Um. You know, if anybody had any questions regarding how we labeled a particular day. That was um, either staffed or uh, to the sixteen. Or if you notice in some of the uh, uh, columns, we have a, a blue indicator, which is when we were at fifteen. But uh, since July first, obviously July first, we had um, you know, more turnout as far as voluntary overtime from our personnel. August is, is, is a challenge for us. Uh, August typically is in, is a month where uh, we have um. More personnel that take uh, time off during the summer. It's the end of the summer. Doing things with their children or getting back to college or to school. So um, our uh, staffing to sixteen was uh, obviously less than July. And uh, September is uh, slightly more so far than uh, August. And we were able to compile the information up to the twenty-fourth of September. And we also uh, provided you with the uh, run data for those particular uh, months. Um, for the particular days. So from what we see so far, um, you know, along with our attempts to. Uh, hire six additional personnel as part of our resignations and retirements. Um, the return of our recruits from the academy uh, on September eleventh. Uh, they have uh, for the most part, we have one left this week that should be becoming manpower. So there'll be uh, three so far have been added to our shifts, so that adds one to each shift. So um, and we're going through the process with the six and hopefully that's uh, mid, mid October, November. And uh, that two, once they're after the uh, they're able to get to the academy and come back and go through our training program. Will then also be part of our um, shift complements. So um, you know, we feel pretty confident that in time, we're gonna continue to see uh, you know, personnel added. Uh, obviously, I also had noted that um, you know, we're having delays with getting a refreshed civil service list. Because of the uh, you know, the pandemic. Uh, normally it would have been held in March, but it's been held off and there's been a delay. Because of the vast amount of uh, test takers that uh, have applied. I believe it's about sixty-seven hundred people that are looking to uh, take the firefighter's entrance exam. So they have to find a venue for um, for them to be taking the exams. Once that happens, that'll, we hope that that'll refresh the uh, the, the list, which is currently uh, pretty much exhausted. So um, a lot of departments have made uh, uh, you know, um, you know, selections from that list. And have been able to, you know, uh, get it down to the point where there's uh, you know. There's not a lot of uh, available uh, personnel that are applicants for some of the cities and towns in the Commonwealth. So uh, so we're working on it and we're hopeful that it'll continue to increase. Once we get to that point uh, where we can get more names from the list, then we're gonna uh, we're focusing on the, on the eight and the two. So um, you know, we're, we're, it's a work in progress right now. So uh, if you had any specific questions for me, I'd be more than happy to review anything or to answer um, you know, any that you have.
Any questions from the board? Ms. Taylor?
Uh, just a comment, um, and I want to make sure that I have the information clear. So we have. Four stations running at full capacity. Is that correct? And then we have West Falmouth as you can staff it.
Correct.
Okay, and so with that model that you have, your um, the data still supports. That um, you have in, increased the um, response time. You've, well, I'm sorry, you've decreased the response time throughout Falmouth by a half a minute or more. Is that accurate?
Uh, it, it is. We've been um, looking at the uh, the runtime since July first. Um, and we're looking at it on a townwide basis. And uh, you know, we're utilizing the information that's uh, available from the dispatch center. And um, you know, we've been able to uh, see a decrease. And you know, we feel that even in the instances when the, the West Falmouth Station isn't staffed. We um, you know, we attribute the, you know, this decrease. By the fact that we have additional personnel at headquarters in East Falmouth Station, which are the, you know, are the busiest. The McGrath's uh, study pointed that out, that seventy-nine percent of our call volume is based on the uh, the, the central, which is headquarters. Main Street and the East Falmouth Station. So by, by virtue of having um, four people at Station Five, for example. The ambulance goes on a call and there's a subsequent call, there's a stat, the, the, the engine is staffed with two. As the manning plant calls for, and they're able to get out. Whereas prior to July first, we didn't, it was unpredictable if we were gonna have any staffing there because of the callback system. So um, you know, we are, you know, we, we are seeing improvements in more efficiency with this plan since it started July first.
And that's with um, basically four point five stations running, correct? I'm just, I'm counting West Falmouth as being staffed maybe fifty percent of the time, you know, so I'm giving, I mean, it may not be fifty percent of the time.
Yeah, so yeah, so obviously the station four, it's, it's variable. Um, but uh, you know, when it is staffed, it's, it's available for response. Uh, especially, you know, obviously if it's in that district, uh, it's able to get out and provide, you know, uh, a, a, a quick response time for that area. If, if it's not, then we have to rely on uh, you know, the other, other stations.
So I was just curious to me that with, again, with four point five stations um, up and running. You've been able to decrease um, response time throughout the entire town of Falmouth. I just found that really, really interesting based on the data.
Yeah, I mean, we, you know, again, because of the amount of activity that we have on a daily basis. But you know, seeing the fact that the, the majority of our calls are, are recurring those two larger districts. Uh, you know, having the extra personnel has made it, you know, for us has made it more efficient. And I think that's, you know, part of it. And I'm sure uh, you know, Chris can, you know, you know. Also, you know, uh, focus on that as well because he's been very helpful in getting that data for us.
I got a question. Oh, Mr. Pazin, go ahead first.
Yeah, I, I, I think maybe one of the reasons why we're seeing this decrease in call times is that. My understanding that the West Falmouth Station was actually vacant oftentimes because you would pull that fire. Person, personnel out and move them to some other station because somebody had put in calls. And had consumed the available staff in those high-volume stations. So there wasn't actually anybody in the West Falmouth Station during periods of time. Am I incorrect on that? A deficit?
No, you're absolutely correct. That, that was a, a system called roving. And uh, that was uh, goes back to when Chief Broder was uh, was, was in charge. And we utilized that uh, the West Falmouth engine to cover other stations. And eventually it was just again, the, it was utilized for the headquarters in the East Falmouth Station because they were out most frequently. So that when that engine was staffed with the one person before July first. If we had decreased manpower, that engine would automatically be sent if we couldn't get any return. Uh, a, a, a personnel through our callback system. So um, yes, it was frequently uh, not staffed and the engine was relocated elsewhere. Uh, you know, especially during the summertime.
Do we have any idea what percentage of the time it was unstaffed in two thousand nineteen?
Uh, as far as when it was relocating, I, I wouldn't have that uh, number. I mean, um, you know, it, it was just uh, you know, on a daily basis, it was, if we couldn't get anybody back. And again, that's a, you know, hard to.
I'm just saying the comparison between this summer and last summer isn't this summer's percentage to a hundred percent staffed last summer. Or the summer before that. For years and years, it has not been staffed a hundred percent of the time.
Yeah, well, it was, it was staffed, it, it, but it may have been uh, it may, it may have been relocated to another station. Because of the lack of our callback. So, so even though it was staffed with the one person, it may have been relocated to covered another station. Frequently uh, during the summertime.
But there were hours in which there was nobody in the fire station.
Yes.
Right.
Ms. Taylor?
I have another uh, personnel question. Are your firemen um, and paramedics and EMTs, are they rotated um, amongst the different stations? For example, one person isn't, just take one firefighter, he isn't always placed at the uh, busiest station.
Some, well, by the contract uh, with the uh, with the union, we do have some personnel that have what they call bids. They are uh, they pick a station at the beginning of each year and they're assigned there for the year. However, we do have personnel that we rotate. Um, generally the uh, the newer firefighters that are less senior. At the headquarters station and, and they may um, rotate out to these stations.
So someone could choose to be at um, Main Street or East Falmouth, the busiest stations. They can, if they put that in, that's what they wanted.
They could, yeah, they have that opportunity once a year. Most people don't pick headquarters.
Yeah.
Thank you. I just wanted to go back to Ms. Taylor's question about uh, sort of, that it's curious that. Response times have improved despite the fact that we're not quote-unquote staffing five stations. We're staffing four stations all the time and only sometimes the fifth station. And Mr. Jones certainly hit on part of the explanation for that. But I just wanted to remind folks, I think you're aware, but uh, the, one of the reasons that response times have improved. Is because we went from a model in which the start of shift staffing was eleven firefighters at the start of shift to fourteen. And even that eleven was only in place for a year or two, and before that it was ten. So in the previous model, we were bringing a lot of people in, you know, only when needed. Which means they had to respond from home, they weren't responding from the fire station, to get up above that ten or eleven start of shift minimum. And now we're starting with fourteen. So I, I think that has a, a lot to do with why response times have improved across town.
Right, and, and over, you know, over the, over the last year or so, um. Because we were working off the ten-man minimum, prior to the July first agreement to go to fourteen. The ten persons, you know, allowed for two one-man stations, which was West Falmouth Station and the Woods Hole Station. We had uh, you know, uh, turned to allowing to staff the eleventh person. Uh, to, to an eleventh person model so that we could s- send an extra person to the Woods Hole Station. To staff the ambulance because the Woods Hole Station provides a secondary backup for the Main Street or the downtown area. Um, and then during COVID, Chief Small had uh, you know, uh, raised the level to thirteen. So that we could have extra personnel um, because of the, the, the nature of our responses. You know, uh, you know, to address uh, you know, the, the, the COVID issue. And then to we, then to fourteen. So each step of the way, you know, the efficiency was improving.
I, and I, I understand, and I understand your point, um, Mr. Johnson, stop. I guess my point is that with the staffing now and four point five stations working, we have improved response time. And that is my point.
And the only one that wasn't really improved this last month, I think, was Station Three, right? Is that North Falmouth?
Yes, North Falmouth.
Right.
Yeah, and you know, part of, you know, I, I think part of that is the fact because it's the northernmost station, you know, uh, you know. Or area for us. And, and in that corner, when the ambulance is committed and goes to the hospital. If there's a subsequent call in its district and they're available, they, they would be responding back. To their, their district from the hospital. So their runtimes uh, to and from the hospital are a little more significant at times.
Right. And I got another, the same old question. Uh, how soon do you think we're gonna have enough guys? Or staff people, I should say, not guys, but um, people to have two people in West Falmouth full-time? Do you have a projected date when you think that could be possible?
I, I don't have a projected date. The, as you can imagine, the, the challenges that we have on a uh. On a daily basis of the fact that we have personnel that may um, may be off that day. As, as I tried to outline, uh, you know, right now on our particular shifts, we have at least um, you know. Three personnel that are out on injury leaves and one on administrative leaves. We have, you know, I, I anticipate right now, well, last week I had one individual go out on uh, on injury leave as well. For uh, for surgery. And we're anticipating another one that's gonna be going out on maternity leave. Um, so what, i- if we continue on a daily basis, we either have, some of our shifts have thirteen personnel. So we have to hire fourteen. Some have fourteen, but if there's people off during the day, we'll have to hire. So we're frequently hiring on a daily basis. And it's only gonna be um, you know, corrected as we continue to put personnel on. So if we can get these six personnel in, 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 in the pipeline and get them to the academy. You know, we're still looking after January by the time they're gonna be, you know, available to start. You know, getting the, you know, after the academy, because we'd like to essentially get them to the academy first, bring them back and do the training. Um, and if we can continue to, you know, to, once we get them um, processed. And we can continue to look at hiring personnel off of the civil service list, then we can continue to um, you know. You know, get others uh, working towards adding more personnel to our um, complement. So at fourteen, as we continue to get to fourteen, then personnel would be able to, you know, make, might take advantage of work in the overtime. Uh, to, because now we're not hiring as frequently and they might take advantage of that. And our numbers will increase, but really, you know, the unforeseen, you know, issues with personnel is, is something that. Um, you know, I, I think we're just gonna have to, you know, uh, e- expect.
Okay, Mr. Jones, and we have a chat, I'll, I'll mention that in a moment.
Yeah, understanding the numbers uh, in response time for District Four. Is that responses to District Four or coming from the District Four station? In other words, if there were a call in West Falmouth and District Four was not staffed, would that be considered a District One response? Or a District Four response?
Go ahead, Chris. Chris can.
I can answer that. So, so the numbers that we're looking at are, are for the calls that are physically in District Four.
Okay.
The, the response time numbers that we look at um, when, when I provide them. Do not look at whether or not Station Four is staffed or not staffed. Where apparatus is coming from, from within the community, whether it's in the station or, or not. Uh, it only looks at response times to calls that are within the geographic boundaries of District Four. Or, or any other specific district.
Is there any way of getting the data as to the difference in response times from, for District Four? For when West Falmouth is staffed and when it's not staffed?
Not from this, not from the um, not from the dispatch programs that we currently have in place. The, the restrictions uh, allow us to look at it um, within geographic areas. And within a defined timeframe.
Um, so we don't know how many of those one hundred and seven incidents in District Four were um, responded to by the District Four station? And how many were not?
We'd have to look at it at a day-by-day basis, I think.
All right, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Suso?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to, looking further at the uh, information provided in the packet to the board. I just wanted to summarize that, again, in the month of July, um, the data confirmed that. Uh, on the day shift in Station Four, the West Falmouth Station, uh, that was man. that was manned forty eight percent of the shifts in the month of July. The night, that was the day shift. In the night shift, it was manned sixty five percent of the time. In the going into the month of August, where we anticipated as Acting Chief Smith has indicated a downturn because of that's a normal vacation time for firefighters like everyone else. Our day shift staffing for West Falmouth in August dropped to twenty six percent of the shifts. And our night shift staffing dropped from well over fifty percent, from sixty five percent to forty two percent. Interestingly, in the month of September, when we, as has been indicated, anticipated a rebound, we have indeed begun to see that. And I wanted to confirm it. Through the through September twenty fourth, it's not a complete month. The day shift staffing increased to thirty three percent of all shifts. That's an increase from twenty six to thirty three percent. And the night shift staffing increased from forty two percent. It jumped over half of the night shifts. Fifty four percent were staffed in West Falmouth so far in the month of September. So you see a trend back upward as we anticipated with the vacation time in August settling down and some additional staffing beginning to become available. I also want to note, Mr. Chairman, that the other graphic sent out with the email gave information on the total number of incidents, again, in that particular district. You'll note in July, in District Four, the West Falmouth District specifically, there were fifty six total incidents. Interestingly, in August, that remained fairly stable with fifty one percent total incidence in the month of August. However, in the month of September, again, through September twenty fourth, that number had dropped from in the fifties to only twenty eight. So considerable downturn in number of incidents in the West Falmouth district for the month of September. And I wanted to point that out as well. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. So another question I have, Mr. Smith, is the, we only have the one fire truck that can fit in Station Four, correct?
Yes, correct.
And is that fully functional at this time?
Yes.
Okay. So if we have the people, then we can we can man that station.
It is it is staffed this evening.
Okay. Okay, well, is there anything we can do to help you facilitate more hiring?
Well, not at this time. You know, I have some, you know, great staff right now that are that are working on, you know, supporting us through this process. We held the interviews for these six individuals and they're going through the medical and psychological and the physical agility exam. And, you know, we were able to to take care of that over the last month or so. Where, you know, hopefully, you know, we've been told by the Human Resources Civil Service in Boston that they, November is currently the timeframe for holding the exams, but you know, like anything else, they're not going to hold themselves to that, you know, answer. So, you know, just kind of keeping our fingers crossed. And then after July, January, excuse me, then we'll go for the additional two. So unfortunately, you know, there have been delays and it's not from, you know, for any particular reason except for the current circumstances that we're we're dealing with. So for us, you know, we're hoping that some of our personnel get healthy and can get back. And that'll that'll bring things up and we hope that everybody stays safe and, you know, we don't have any issues as we go forward. You know, the I I you know, I have to say, you know, that our personnel have have, you know, have stepped have stepped up considerably. And, you know, having having to hire every single day does, you know, tax the personnel and, you know, we worry about their, you know, their safety and we don't, you know, and at some point we have, we've had to have holdovers on a daily basis, more so than I can ever remember in my career here, that we've had to hold over so many people because we're, you know, we're, we set this minimum at fourteen every single day. But our personnel are stepping up as best they can to take the openings each day. So I give them a lot of credit for for trying to make this work. And I think that in in the next few months or so, we'll continue to see hopefully a little more, you know, participation in that. And if we can keep our numbers a little stable. You know, I I just ask for your patience. I I know you had a question also about the about the engine. And, you know, and we're looking to get, you know, some approval for an additional fire truck this November. So we're hoping for support there. And, you know, I just, you know, I appreciate all the support from from everybody that's, you know, here this this evening and also, you know, Megan as well. And I appreciate all that everybody's done and appreciate the assistance with Mr. Souza over trying to, you know, you know, go over everything the last couple of months while I'm here in the interim position.
Hey, we do have a couple more questions coming through on the chat. Todd Taylor would like to know when the additional staff is hired, will the minimum staffing become sixteen? He had a previous comment, but I think Mr. Jones addressed that with his question. Is that correct, Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Right. So when the additional staff is hired, will the minimum staffing become sixteen? Is that the plan?
Well, if we if if everybody was hired today, if we were able to get these six, these six personnel onboard the in the additional ten, and if everybody came back to work and we had a completely healthy department, we'd have eighteen, two shifts of eighteen and two shifts of nineteen. So we'd have a total of about seventy four personnel. Having these other sixteen personnel, excuse me, having these other, yeah, sixteen would be nice. You know, having these additional personnel coming onboard will will increase it to a shift staff sixteen. But again, not having everybody onboard that's healthy because they're taking up a spot. That's where we see the the shift level at the beginning of the day, you know, being a challenge.
Okay. And then one more question from Mr. Taylor is what happens when a fire truck breaks down in town? And what happens to the West Falmouth Fire Station if that truck is used?
Currently, if if something, well, put it this way, as I had stated in in my response, currently, the the engine in West Falmouth is utilized to relocate to other stations in order for us to perform the maintenance and other types of service. The the mechanic division is working trying to address any any problems before they get large and before we have more issues. We've been very fortunate that since July first, we've been able to avoid having that station closed that the engine has not been kept overnight. In fact, at least twice, I've had them finish up their work during the day so that we could put it back in West Falmouth because we had available personnel. If by chance, if we had an unforeseen mechanical issue where we had to keep that engine out of service because it would have to be relocated elsewhere because it's essentially our was our reserve engine. And when that's used engine that was there for a couple of years went out of service in June of twenty nineteen, we moved our reserve engine there. So currently, we have five engines and five stations. If it was to go out of service, we would, we would still continue to look for voluntary overtime and we put the fifteenth or sixteenth personnel up in the North Falmouth Station. We have a plan in place. We haven't had to have that truck out of service for any amount of time. So the only time that that engine is relocated is when there is no staffing in that station and we can we can move it around during the day. So we've taken advantage of that and we monitor it every single day.
Well, thank you. That was a very good answer. And I just want to make a mention that I've noticed that when the fire trucks pull out of the fire stations in the evenings, they're very polite about it and they're very quiet. And you would think it would be more noisy, but they're, they do a good job of that.
Well, have enough tension, attentions on us. So we're trying to tiptoe out of here.
Yeah, good neighbors.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there anything else for the chief? Okay. Well, thank you. I appreciate you coming. Thank you.
Thank you all. Appreciate it. Thank you. Bye.
Okay. Little Pond Sewer Service Area Grinder Pump reimbursement. I'm glad to see this finally coming before us. I know those people could use the money.
And Mr. Chairman, Amy Lowell has a presentation that she's going to run through.
Very good.
Bring your board up to date. Thank you.
Welcome. How are you?
Hello. I'm Amy Lowell. I'm the wastewater superintendent. I'm going to share my screen here and pull up a presentation on the grinder pump issue. You see a beginning presentation slide there?
We can.
Okay. So, good evening. I'm Amy Lowell. I'm the wastewater superintendent and we're here. I'm here to talk tonight about the Little Pond Sewer Service Area Grinder Pump reimbursement. So just reminding on the history of this, four years ago in May of twenty sixteen, the Board of Selectmen voted a grinder pump policy, which had a number of facets to it, but it included the statement that the town would provide a modest compensation or a subsidy for one time partial reimbursement of the grinder pump installation cost. And this was to apply to non-commercial residential properties in the Little Pond Sewer Service Area. The last Select Board discussion of this matter was in December of twenty nineteen. And that at that meeting, I focused on a presentation about the average cost difference and how to how to how to determine the basis for the reimbursement amount. So the average, as I presented back in in December twenty nineteen, the average cost difference between pump connections and gravity connections was eighteen hundred dollars. And what I mean by that is if you if you you take a large number of gravity connections and you take the average of that cost and you subtract that from the average of a large number of grinder pump sewer connection costs, the average of that was eighteen hundred dollars. And that was based on cost data from four hundred and fifty five residential sewer connections, roughly half of each type of grinder pump connections and gravity connections. The data was provided to the town by property owners and by three contractors who each completed more than one hundred sewer, excuse me, sewer connections in the Little Pond area. So if the six hundred eighty one residential property owners who installed grinder pumps were reimbursed eighteen hundred dollars each, the total cost to the town would be about one point two million dollars. There are sufficient funds remaining under the article, Article twenty eight, that was the funding appropriation for the Little Pond project to cover this cost as well as the born, the pending Born's Pond Inlet Widening Project. So the next step, the goal for this meeting was to talk about the reimbursement criteria, the process and the schedule, and I hope to take a vote on these matters. The proposed criteria for the reimbursement are that only the owner of the property at the time of sewer connection will be eligible for reimbursement. So if, for example, the property was sold after the the home was connected to the sewer, it's not the current owner of that property that would be eligible for reimbursement. It would be the previous property owner who had covered the cost of the sewer connection. The second criteria for reimbursement would be only non-commercial residential properties would be eligible for the reimbursement. To qualify for reimbursement, the property's combined sewer connection permit must also be closed out. This is just to ensure that we are wiping this lake clean on the permitting for that project before we before the town reimburses property owners for the cost of connecting to the sewer. This went after we last, after the last presentation in December, the town sent out a a set of a set of notifications to property owners whose permits were not yet closed out. And with a lot of cooperation and assistance from the town's electrical inspector, a large number of those have now been inspected and and closed out. But there are still some that have not, the permits aren't closed out. So that will need to be completed before the reimbursement can be provided. The proposed application process for the reimbursement is that the property owner would apply for reimbursement by submitting a simple one page application form with on the back will have a W nine form for that property owner to complete. And they would submit that we have, we have developed a form and that form says on it the address to which they'd submit the form, which will be the Department of Public Works and or they can email it to a pump reimbursement email address that the IT department kindly created for us. The wastewater division will review the applications to verify that the criteria are meant, criteria are met with assistance from the assessor's office and town council if needed. And then, once we've reviewed them, we'd forward them to accounting for reimbursement. As far as notification of reimbursement availability, we would plan after the Board of Selectmen votes the amount and the criteria and the process for reimbursement, we would send out what I hope is the last letter ever to the Little Pond Sewer Area Grinder Pump Property Owners. We would mail it to the address that the town has for those who owned the properties at the time of sewer connection. We would also, and that letter would include the form that they would, that the grinder pump property owners would have to complete in order to get the reimbursement. We'd also publish the information about the availability of the reimbursement in the Falmouth Enterprise. We posted on the town's website and notify the neighborhood organizations, Falmouth Heights, Maravista Improvement Association and the T-Ticket Association. I will say, I know the associations are paying attention and so they will help get out the information as well. So the suggested vote, obviously, there's, this is a evening for discussion, but the suggested vote this evening on reimbursement would be the amount, which is suggested at eighteen hundred dollars per eligible grinder pump property. And the eligibility criteria that I just reviewed, which was only the owners, owner or owners of the property at the time of sewer connection are eligible for reimbursement. And only commercial residential, excuse me, non-commercial residential properties would be eligible. And the timeframe that's suggested is that applications for reimbursement would be accepted through December thirty first of twenty twenty one. That's more than a year's time. I would expect a large number of the reimbursement applications would be would come in quickly. But there, this longer timeframe would give people who no longer, who for whom the town had a had an out of date address or who needed still to close out their permit, it would allow those folks time to make sure that they are aware of this process and can apply for it and receive reimbursement if they're qualified. I did have a last, an additional suggested vote, which is that the town's commitment to providing grinder pumps and reimbursements is for properties connected before today's date. Any new future pump connections in the Little Pond Service Area would not be provided a pump by the town or reimbursement for installation. And the reason I wanted to bring this up is that there are about nineteen properties in the Little Pond Sewer Service Area, the low pressure portion of the area that would require a grinder pump that were assessed a betterment but have not yet connected to the sewer. That's because those properties are vacant land or they, there are a few uninhabitable homes that have a terminated water service. And so we're not connected to the sewer. So the, my understanding is that the pump provision by the town and the partial reimbursement was intended to reduce the cost and impact to existing homeowners within the service area, not for new development or redevelopment. So I can keep up my presentation or pull it down and take any questions or open it up for discussion.
Mr. Jones?
You mentioned some counts that aren't closed. Is that different than they have not connected?
Yes. Yes. So, when I say that the permit is not closed out, what I mean is that the property was connected to the sewer, but one or more of the inspections to close out the permit was not completed. The majority of those are electrical inspections. Unfortunately, the building department had a transition in electrical inspectors during this timeframe and the building department, the electrical inspector was not able to make it to some of the pump installations during the original installation timeframe. And not everyone called, not all the contractors called for the inspections that were required. So, in order to close out the permit for the sewer connection, we need to make sure that all the inspections of the equipment were carried out. The other, I'm sorry?
Those would still be eligible.
Yes. They just need to close it out first. So, we sent a letter to the property owners whose permits were still open. We've now sent them two letters since December saying, "Your permit's still open. Here's what you have to do. You have to call the electrical inspector and schedule an appointment." And many, many people have done that and many, many permits have been closed out, but there are still a few.
Fantastic.
Amy, would you mind closing the screen share?
Of course.
When you do that, I can only see a few faces and I'm not sure if people want to talk. Thank you. So, I noticed that you wanted to only reimburse people that were, actually, the people that were at the house at the time of the connection when it was being made. I guess that's because if the house is sold, then you feel like it's new people. They don't really deserve the reimbursement. Is that the idea?
The idea was to reimburse the owner of the house at the time the property was connected, because that's the entity that paid the cost of connection, incurred that cost. So, if the property changed hands, it's assumed that the value of having the sewer connection and paying for the pump portion of that connection was incorporated into the sale. And it's really the initial owner or the owner who paid for the connection itself who would be eligible.
Right. Okay. So, is there any more questions from the board? Okay.
I think it's a great plan. I would move that we set the amount of the reimbursement for the grinder pumps at $1,800. The eligibility only be the owners of the property at the time of the sewer connection and non-commercial residents are eligible. And the timeframe of the applications for the reimbursements would be accepted through December 31, 2021.
Anderson, second.
And does that include all the written language that Ms. Lowell had provided on the screen as well?
I was going to make a motion for the additional suggested vote as a separate vote.
What I wrote was clear, but I wanted to make sure that it's clear that this reimbursement doesn't just go to residents, it goes to residential property owners. So, there are people who are not residents of Falmouth, but who are property owners in Falmouth who will get this reimbursement.
That's fair. It's the same people that paid.
Right. That's.
Okay.
Want to make sure that was clear. Okay. And I'm sorry, I interrupted. You were going to make a motion on the last one, I thought.
Well, Mr. Jones had a motion on the first part of it and then he wanted to vote your additional language separately, I guess.
Same with my second.
Okay. Okay. And so, we have a motion and a second. And all in favor, Ms. Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Mr. Jones?
Jones, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
And Brown, aye.
I would also move that this is going to go to grinder pumps that reimbursement have been connected before today. Any future connections will not be provided a reimbursement or a pump.
Okay.
Patterson, second.
Okay. And all in favor, Ms. Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Mr. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
And I vote aye as well. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Lowell. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Governor's COVID-19 Order Number 50 making certain phase three adjustments, extension of outdoor dining provisions, direction and guidance from the Select Board. Mr. Suso, what are you going to tell us about this one?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The reason we put this on the agenda is the governor in Order Number 50 is allowing municipalities to extend the outdoor seating deadline as well as some related items. And we want to seek the guidance of the board as to your preference. We do have Assistant Town Council Irene Mullen with us. Irene has provided information in your board packet that summarizes what the governor has made available. And one of our suggestions would be potentially for the board to consider. Right now, everything, the deadline is November 1 for this outdoor seating under the governor's original order. And it would be most helpful if we could have at least an additional 30 days to December 1 to come back to the board with some further information. And I would defer to Irene for, I'm sure, what will be a most helpful further elaboration on that.
And Ms. Mullen, would you like to add to that?
Sure. So, the original order under which the outdoor seating for restaurants was permitted is Order 35. That set a date of November 1 as the end of the permits. Towns could choose to set a sooner date, but the policy that you adopted issued permits until November 1. So, right now, all existing outdoor dining permits under Order 35 expire by their own terms on November 1. Order 50 gives the Select Board the authority to extend those permits to any time up until 60 days after the end of the declared COVID-19 emergency. It doesn't mean that you have to and it doesn't mean that the governor has automatically extended Falmouth's permits. Right now, Falmouth's permits do expire on November 1 and further action by the Select Board is required if they are to go beyond that time. In terms of how long, that's anywhere from November 1 until 60 days past the end of the emergency. The way things are looking now, the end of that emergency could be well into next year, potentially through next summer into next fall. So, in terms of considering how the Select Board wants to approach extensions, this is sort of a longer period of time than had been considered during the original authorization process under Order 35. Secondly, the Select Board can do several different things in terms of approving. If it did want to extend, there can be a vote to blanket extend to a certain date. Mr. Suso had mentioned December 1. So, there could be a vote that would extend all existing permits on their existing terms for one more month. There could also be either a loan or in combination with the prior option, an extension for a longer period of time, including through the winter. The Order 50 does give the Select Board the authority to modify conditions for winter situations. Some of the things that Order 50 mentions is that there may be different concerns in the winter about pedestrian access, snow removal. Heaters come to mind, things that were not part of the original permits that may now be either an impediment that needs to be taken into account or an addition that the business needs in order to have seating outdoors. So, any extension or approval of a process to review and extend could incorporate different conditions for winter and summer. It could extend only certain categories for winter. One thing that comes to mind is some of these outdoor dining permits involve the use of public sidewalks. And there may be issues there with snow removal by DPW that may need to be taken into account. So, lastly, the way that this could be done by the Select Board is within your discretion, either the prior procedure that was used with delegated authority to the town manager and input from town departments as he saw appropriate. There could be all the way up to a formal hearing process, although that is not required under this order. But in extending or altering or issuing new approvals, Order 50 gives you the latitude of everything from where we did before with an administrative approval process, all the way up to a full licensing hearing.
Okay. Thoughts from the board? Mr. Patterson?
Yeah, I'm inclined to continue this broader permitting process that we've placed, that we've given the restaurants to broaden their seating capacity within the restrictions that the governor has established. My concern is, of course, if they're going to add heaters to extend their restaurant seating capacity into the winter, we need some kind of administrative approval process to make sure that they're safe. So, I would want some sort of administrative approval under certain conditions if they want to change the current arrangements that they have on file. But I'm inclined to say, let's give these restaurants a chance to, do as much business as possible within the governor's restrictions.
I would agree with that and I think you'll notice if you go out to dinner that these heaters are already in place at these places.
Yes.
So, any other comments?
I guess I wanted to make it clear that I like the administrative process that we set up for them to get their permits, their expanded permits. And I think we could continue that same method.
Yeah, I like that too. I think it's been working well. And actually, I really have enjoyed the whole new atmosphere with the outdoor dining. It's really, I think it's added a lot to our town and I'd like to see, I've encouraged some of the restaurants that I attend to maybe apply for some more permanency. Maybe next summer they could have that again. I think it's great. Really, people seem to enjoy it. So. Any other comments? Yes, Mr. Patterson?
I know that Attorney Mullen mentioned such things as snow removal. I mean, there may be some conditions that we're going to have to apply to outdoor seating just to allow us to do an efficient job of clearing sidewalks where these properties might have extended out of the public areas.
That's true. And we also might find that we get a little extra help from the businesses because they're going to want to shovel out those areas because they're going to get, make a place for the people to sit. I mean, if there's snow on the ground, the people are probably not going to be dining outside, I'm going to guess. But it's possible. At least they should have the option if they want to give it a try. We'll see how hardy our New England neighbors are.
Well, I was thinking more in terms of removing furniture that might be in the way of doing efficient snow removal.
Okay. Mr. Suso, do you feel comfortable with modifying that role and continuing to advise these businesses? Or is there more of a role for us to play in this?
Well, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm comfortable with extending that. I guess my suggestion would be if the board's willing to allow a blanket extension to December 1 and allow me to work with Attorney Irene Mullen in further reviewing options and possibilities. It may be that, I know that at least in a couple of the situations where we extended permits, there was some controversy generated. And I don't know whether the board wants to continue those same circumstances or to potentially take a look at those and see whether or not some further adjustments might be in order. But minimally extending through December 1 and perhaps allowing us to discuss that further with you, maybe within 30 days, would be my recommendation if that would be agreeable.
I think that sounds reasonable. Mr. Patterson?
I know a number of restaurants do close up after the holidays. So, I mean, if we went to January 1, 2021, is that too long for you to accomplish what you're looking for going in?
I think that's doable as well. The only question becomes weather-related issues that might affect existing permits for those businesses that aren't likely to be staying open. I know it's possible. I know a number of businesses come to mind that traditionally have closed up between Columbus Day and Veterans Day. Maybe they'll choose to extend things a bit further. One never knows if the business might justify it. But I think we could work, if you decided to extend it 60 days, I think we'd find a way to work within that and get back to you with some additional suggestions if you care to consider those.
Okay. Ms. Taylor?
I was just wondering if it wouldn't be prudent to, at this point, go through December 1 and then before December 1, take a look at it again and extend. Can we do that?
We could. That's the first option that Mr. Suso put out there for us and that gives him maybe a little leverage to negotiate the snow removal planning.
The board has the option to do multiple extensions. You could do a series of blanket extensions. You could do a single blanket extension followed by a renewal process, an administrative renewal process. You could do a blanket extension followed by a full hearing process over the course of the winter. There's a lot of latitude there.
Right.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Patterson?
I'm trying to give the businesses the opportunity to plan to take advantage of this extension. So, I don't want to make these too short of horizons because, you know, they've got to order materials, they've got to staff and things like that. So, if we're going to say through December 1, I want to alert them to, we're considering extending it through January 1 so they can at least be thinking about how they're going to manage that business. They're already severely handicapped by the COVID-19 pandemic. I'm trying to give them a little bit more opportunity to increase the revenues in this particular year.
Okay. And I guess, Mr. Suso, you have the opportunity to modify any one of these permit applications along the way if needed. Is that correct?
No, that's not correct.
Oh, really?
So, as of now, Mr. Suso's authority exists only under the policy that you approved and delegated under Order 35. That goes to November 1 only. If you vote a blanket extension from, to any date, whether it be January or December, all permits will be extended on their existing terms with no modification until that date. If you are to approve something else, a policy or an administrative renewal policy, that would have to delegate to Mr. Suso the authority to act in your stead as the local licensing authority, as was done under Order 35. But this does require that you take direct action as the local licensing authority to do that. So, if you do a blanket extension, it's going to essentially extend what's there. But you have to delegate again to Mr. Suso by affirmative vote if you want to do that.
All right. Then in that case, Mr. Jones, go ahead.
In that case, I guess I'd feel much more comfortable going to the December 1 as the blanket extension but try to make what Mr. Patterson is talking about clear to our businesses that we're intending to extend under different circumstances beyond that. It's not going to be December 1, we're going to close, not do anything. But we're going to be looking for what can we do to extend it into the winter. But I think to extend a blanket beyond December 1 may not be in our best interest.
And I was going to agree with that. I was thinking more in terms of adding some conditions now that Mr. Suso and Mr. Johnson Staub would have authority to intercede and make adjustments as needed for, you know, changing conditions as winter approaches. Maybe if they go to a business that's encroaching on a sidewalk where we want to be able to plow that and say, "I'm sorry, you're going to have to move this stuff." We could give him that authority now rather than just a blanket approval. We could approve all other aspects, but modify that. I don't know if that would be sufficient.
If there's going to be a blanket extension, it has to be under the same conditions. Or we come up with a whole new condition?
Or if we add the condition that there will be modifications made as needed, I don't know if that's sufficient language, but it wouldn't really be a blanket because we're modifying it.
Okay.
Does that sound right?
Sorry, is that a question to me?
Just a question to everybody if I'm on the right track with that. I guess it should be to you.
I think that we want to avoid any appearance of businesses being treated differently. So I think there is a due process issue that is here. As I'm not sure how much you are aware of this, but there was a civil suit that was filed in Superior Court by a neighbor to one of the permitted restaurants. And one of the issues that was raised in that suit was due process. So I would be hesitant to suggest that you do a blanket extension that contains a highly discretionary and pretty vague delegation of weather-related changing circumstances authority to the town manager because I think it doesn't set out a clear and uniform policy that would be applicable to all businesses and transparent. So I think for the purposes of of ensuring due process, it would be simpler to do a blanket extension to December first, assuming that probably we're not going to get snow before then. And in the meantime, come up with a more developed process that takes into account these factors for you to vote on as a policy under Order 50 to implement going forward. That would be my recommendation.
That sounds like good advice. Yes, Mr. Patterson?
Perhaps I understand now, and I think that makes sense. But I think we should also announce that we'd be opening up for an extension of permitting, of expanded permitting, if you will, if they applied half, you know, by some deadline, right, in perhaps in November, so that we could begin to consider early on extending, you know, or a lax seating arrangement through the rest, well, until the governor's order. It, you know, 60 days after the governor's restrictions, I think, have ended, I guess is the right word for it. I think what I'm trying to do is say, we're going to give you the opportunity to continue to have expanded seating, but you're going to have to reapply.
I would hope we'd have our new policy in place or advertizable by November 15th for what's going to happen after December first.
Oh, I was thinking maybe for November first, Mr. Suso offered it might be done within the month of October. I think that would be great if we could do that.
That'd be great.
That sounds good.
Agreed.
Okay, then I guess I would entertain a motion to extend the blanket approval till December first with a plan to have modified parameters for future approvals that we would hopefully endorse at least through January first, but we're only going to vote the December first one at this time.
I'll make the motion.
Patterson's second.
Okay, so all in favor, Ms. Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Mr. Jones?
Jones, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
And Brown, aye. So we're good for the restaurants to continue as they are for December first, and then we'll have a plan hopefully by November first and Mr. Suso.
And, Mr. Chairman, I just want to confirm that, yeah, well, I'll be working with town council on that during the coming month, and we would we would bring any suggested consideration for changes to the board at a meeting in November. So thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you for your hard work.
And thank you for your good advice.
Always.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Governor, minutes of meetings, public session A. Does anyone have any modifications to the minutes?
Sorry. I have a typo for the August 24th minutes. On page. On page five, the paragraph right in the middle of the page where it starts off attorney comment. Noted, it is actually up. The next line says Miss Loa. Well, it should be Lowell. I think we need to make sure that Amy Lowell gets credit for that comment.
Right. And I was going to comment on that item that it was request on behalf of Fashion Foods LLC. But should we actually go further with the description and say, applying to build a Wendy's restaurant? Just for the record, so people know what the proposal was, because I don't think it's really very clear.
I think it's a good idea.
Okay.
Agreed.
But with those two edits, I would move that we approve and release for public access.
On page eight, I had one.
Sure.
Item number five at the last sentence. Saying that Farm Town with Operating Facilities that would have to be captively bid.
Yes, competitively bid.
I think that's what they meant. I think that's what the word was.
Agreed.
Right.
That's it.
Okay.
General question, isn't it? Isn't it actually Farming Falmouth is the organization name?
I think it is, actually.
That's what I've heard used by members of that organization.
At the beginning, that's what it says.
Okay.
Yeah, so it should be changed there as well.
They could do it.
The town can simulate a grant with assistance from others if there was a vision of Farming Falmouth Operating Facilities.
Yeah.
That would be competitively built. Okay. So with those changes, I would entertain a motion for approval.
So move.
Patterson's second.
Very good. All in favor, Ms. Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Mr. Jones?
Jones, aye.
Mr. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
And Brown, aye.
On the next minutes of August 27th, there's some missing wording on the last page, on page four, where it says items two and three. There's no actions associated with those, if we took any. And I don't believe they were blanked.
Well, we did approve it, so that should be the the record there.
It just doesn't record our votes on the separate items.
That's a good point. Item two was approved, authorized submission of application, mess, energy, environmental affairs, food security obstruction. I think we did approve both of those.
I just think we should hold off and get the appropriate action that was taken.
Okay. Or do you want to just make the motion that we make a note that it was approved because I'm sure it was?
Three was withdrawn. We didn't actually do that. I thought we didn't do anything with two because we'd approved number one. And number one covered that one.
In other words, no action was taken on either of those two items.
Right.
Okay, yeah, well, actually, so maybe then it's correct, actually. That's right. You're right, Mr. Jones. That's we did not take action on that last one.
Well, if that be the case, then I found them to be substantially correct. And so I would move that we approve the minutes of August 27th, 2020, and release for public access.
No, second.
Okay, and all in favor, Ms. Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Mr. Jones?
Jones, aye.
Mr. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
And Brown, aye.
And I would move approval of the minutes of Monday, September 14th.
Okay.
Patterson's second.
Very good. All in favor, Ms. Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Mr. Jones?
Jones, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
And Brown, aye. Very good. All those minutes are all set. And individual select members reports, any reports from any members tonight? Mr. Patterson?
Yes, I attended the Cape Cod Regional Transit Authority Advisory Board meeting. I'm one you're appointed member of that board. The, I guess, one thing I can say is I'm really impressed with how well-run that organization is under the director of home care and all the services they've provided throughout this COVID-19 pandemic. I mean, they're many times essential services, and I'll just run a few. I mean, we've we've had the fixed route. You know, in our particular case, the sea line that runs through our town ran, is still running continuously. The Falmouth Shuttle ran through the summer. Their dial-a-ride transit or DART services for those point-to-point reserved trips. The Falmouth Service Center van, which is provided and maintained by the CCRTA, has been delivering groceries to us senior citizens, can't get out of their houses, need that extra assistance. There are special Boston hospital runs that have continued for services of Boston hospitals. And then there are special health treatment bus services that continue to run. And then there is also the Cape Flyer, the railroad that runs a commuter service from Ianis going through, born over the railroad bridge of the canal and all the way up to the Boston South Station. All those things have been going on in the background and done very well and very efficiently. One more thing I might mention that came up, they're they actually started a special cell phone app service, and they're calling it the Rapid Dart, which means that you get more. Currently, you need to schedule a ride for dial-a-ride transit 24 hours ahead of time. But they're coming up with an app that would be run on your cell phone, and you could actually put in an order for a call, I mean, a ride on a more short-term basis. And if there happens to be a bus that's available, they could service that. It's it's in a kind of a prototype test stage in Ianis. But that could be an exciting enhancement to the CCRTA services that are provided, at least in certain municipalities on the Cape. I just thought I would mention that as an upcoming thing. I also attended the EDIC strategic planning meetings past Friday when we were basically looking at all the possible initiatives that EDIC is involved in and thinking about of those that we, you know, should continue on in the future and doing some initial planning as to how we could pursue those. The one I think, I think these will be brought up and briefed to us as they come along. But, you know, a useful meeting and and you've pointed me to the EDIC board now also, so I was actively involved in that. And then the last thing I'll just mention is that I joined a lot of other volunteers in town to set up the outdoor class spaces at our various elementary schools around town. Lining out blocks so that classes can be assigned certain little spaces outside in the yard when the weather's broke good. There's a lot of trees that have been sectioned, a lot of tree trunks sectioned up to form seats and distributed so that there'll be places for people to sit in these little blocked off areas. But a lot of people turned out, volunteered on the weekends to make this happen. And it's kind of nice to see, and hopefully it's going to make in-school activities a little bit more tolerable for these young people when they can get outside and potentially even the spacing will be such that they could actually pull down their masks and get a breath of fresh air.
That's a great idea, and I'm glad to see it happening. Thanks to Amy Leonardi in coming up. Yeah, I guess she was a teacher down south where they were already doing that, and she said, hey, maybe we could do it here, and it just took off, and it's a great idea.
She is the ringleader. You're right.
Yeah, right. And so I've been reaching out with to neighboring communities. I spoke with Wayne Taylor in Mashpee about the machine gun range, and he was completely surprised about it. Hadn't seen or heard anything about it. And he was surprised to have not heard about it because he's got a couple of guys on his board, like Andy Gottlieb, who's a very active environmentalist. And so he was interested to learn about it, and I sent him a copy of our select board packet with a little bit of information that was in there. But by now, he's probably had contact because I guess there's going to be a meeting on Friday with each of the towns with representatives from Joint Base Cape Cod to meet with town managers and chair of the select boards. We're also going to have another early meeting tomorrow just to get a little preliminary information. I spoke with the town administrator up in Born. He was very knowledgeable about it. He was a 20-year career military man, so he had a lot of information already, so he wasn't surprised about it. And we're going to learn more tomorrow. I also spoke with Cape Cod Commission staff, and they pointed out that they have very limited ability to intercede or be involved with it because it's a separate environmental review that's been done. And it's sort of out of their hands, but they did send off a statement of their position, so I have a copy of that. And that's all there is for now. It's just trying to get the word out and making sure people know what's going on. And so far, that's what I've been doing.
Thank you.
I did find out when I talked to the town administrator in Born that he was aware of the fact that any clearcutting that they're going to do, they were going to repopulate four to one, create some new habitat in a new area. So I'm not sure exactly how that was, how that would be done, but I'm interested to learn about it. That's it for me for now. Unless anybody else has any questions about that?
And I just have some information on the same issue that you were just talking about with the Science and Community Advisory Council members and a meeting coming up in October 8.
Okay.
That I will I will send to you, and there's also an attached letter regarding the proposed multipurpose machine gun range. And I will send that to you, and it's a Zoom meeting on the 8th from 5:30 to 7:30. But I can send that to you.
Great. Thank you very much. Mr. Suso, anything else from you?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was pleased to meet and reconvene with the board's fire station location committee on this past Wednesday evening, September 23rd. It is anticipated this committee may may have a conclusion and recommendation to the select board as early as following their next meeting, which is now set for Wednesday, October 7th. Also, at Old Stony Beach, there was a shark sighting, as reported to me by the harbor master, Greg Fraser. There has been no confirmation on the species of shark, which was sighted. Certainly, the water was cleared as a precaution. But again, no confirmation on the species of shark which was reported. Also, the select board will be meeting jointly with the school committee at 6:30 PM in virtual session on a for training and workshop purposes on diversity, inclusion, and related items. And I was pleased last Friday to attend the Tommy Leonard Memorial Dedication at Town Hall Square. And I know that Selectman Brown was in attendance as well, and that concludes my report.
Yeah, that was a really nice tribute that they did there. I really enjoyed being there. If you haven't had a chance to see it, that stone is across from the crosswalk from the Quarter Deck Restaurant over to the entrance to Town Hall Square. I think they did a really nice job setting it up. And next August, on August 30th, I think, is their 30th anniversary of their run, and they want to name rename the walkway and put up the sign, Tommy Leonard Walkway at that time. Coming together just like they had envisioned it. And after all that, I guess I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Re-adjourn. Patterson's second.
All in favor, Ms. Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Mr. Jones?
Jones, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Brown, aye. Very good. Thank you all, and have a good night.
You, too.
Okay.
Well done.
Thanks.